According to board policy, it is to announce the lives of all the senior management and board members being recorded. The board is pushing to address the board on any agenda or non-agenda item. Does it still have speaker card? I do have speaker card. We will now move the pledge of allegiance, please. Shall we add two minutes, please?
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the we public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board and on board, of course.
Amen.
Well, we have an agenda to adopt this evening. We have motion to adopt the agenda. Motion by Karen, second by Joe. Please vote.
Do we have a speaker card on that?
Speaker card on five A, second vote for A. We will have speaker Tom, please come forward on five A.
and I need remove consent items altogether, requesting remove item consultant agreements, eight, fifteen, and sixteen. I'll comment on two of those during the consent agenda. But item fifteen, San Diego Regional Economic Development Corporation, is a new, is fifteen thousand dollars from new effort. The consent agenda is not for new efforts, it's for routine efforts. It's so that you guys can have a little workload, but this is a new effort. This is a manipulation of the process and should not be included at all. It should be entirely separate from the plan. Thank you.
consent item are you, are you concerned about? Is it L? You have to go down to L if there's a long list left there, or is it?
Agenda that I printed out from the website doesn't seem to list the letters, but it's the consultant agreements, so there's nineteen consultant agreements. Item eight is Real Matters Incorporated, which was on discussion this fall off last meeting, so that seems to me an inappropriate thing to include in the consent agenda this time since the board asked for information and the public as well. So to have it in the consent agenda seems unusual or just out of place. Item fifteen is a completely new initiative, to be the first K through twelve district to be part of the San Diego Regional Economic Development Corporation. We're paying fifteen thousand dollars to get an invitation for the superintendent to become part of the board. That's completely new. It's inappropriate to have that be included with a routine action, I mean, that gets passed with nine hundred thousand dollars and other things. So that should not be voted on at all. It's not part of the agenda, it's inappropriate here and it's not somewhere else. It needs to be pushed out.
Karen, Karen, you ran the agenda setting here and called up.
We don't see all of the items. But I know we did, didn't we get an update on this one? We did get an update, another board update, so yes, I'm sorry if I missed it. And I know what would be needed or not needed.
So now the board, we have the consent to adopt, we have motion to adopt the agenda.
Motion to adopt agenda less for the L.
So less the entire? Until we adopt L, less eight, fifteen, sixteen, to put on. With that clarification, do we have a second?
Second.
Quick discussion, so when it gets to consent items, we agree, we would adopt consent less eight, fifteen, and sixteen.
We're still going on L.
Maybe pull L completely, when we get to number nine, just add it, because at this point. Yeah. The motion on the table, but sort of, adopt the agenda, less the consent L, eight, fifteen, and sixteen. If you want to get there, make your motion to pull L. With that, we have a second.
Second.
Second by Karen. You're verbal vote, or you vote, or you just have the notes right there and then we'll pull it on.
We can vote, but do you mind repeating which ones we're getting out?
We're going to pull at this point number eight, number fifteen, and number sixteen, pursuant to Joe's motion here, sorry.
From nine L.
From nine L to the consent items.
Consultant agreements.
Right, which is, it's only fifty, which is nine.
Five.
Passes five O. Now go six A, which we reported on closed session. Moved by Joe, seconded by Karen, to accept settlement agreement for OAH case number two zero two three zero six zero one seven three. Vote passed five O. As a whole, item out of closed discussion. Now moving to information and discussion. Seven A, I do not have a speaker card on seven A. So seven A, presentation. Rick Levine Wood, Eric Hall, and Associates.
Is that going to show up on the screen? Thank you. Is this?
It should be, they'll be put in.
Thank you very much. Members of the board, members of the board, hero, executive members of the cabinet, associates who are on page eight, and members of the first operation here, as well as employees who are here, there's also CCA executive leadership. Thank you for the invitation to present tonight. My name is Rick Levine Wood, I'm with Eric Hall and Associates, and we are conducting a several year study of all classified personnel in the district that can move the slide. Do a very quick briefing tonight. What we'll cover is who we are and the study team that's working on behalf of your employees and for you, the scope of the study that we've undertaken, what the study does not cover, that's an important part of the steering committee is, that's an important component of our process. On set basis, we are, and how far off we are, and will be done. So EHNA, MGT Consulting, we're a local Carlsbad firm that has a lot of experience with this, most of the people on our capital team are former directors and administrators in school districts in California. I was personally bandaging you in high school districts personally. Other members are Dr. Kathy Sanchez, as well as.
Because what could you?
For the scope of the study, which job classes are being reviewed, the, all of the classified marketing units are being reviewed, the class, our classes, that's a hundred and forty-five. We also have some supervisory and management confidential classes, so all together, twenty-seven jobs. There are about thirteen hundred classified employees throughout the district that work for you, and we've had the pleasure of meeting them, and I think I'm seeing all of their qualities displayed on these boards. Really outstanding employees. So we could go on to the next slide, and in the study, we are looking at the specific jobs in six phases over a three and a half year period. What we do is we identify the current duties, responsibilities, and representative tasks, and we make sure that these are going to be reflected accurately in the job description. We will also recommend drafts, changes in descriptions, identify any jobs that might no longer be needed in the board, some new jobs that might be needed because of changes. We also have a wage setting portion that occurs with each phase where we confirm the current external charter rate, what the district is wanting to do competitively in order to attract or retain talent and test on employees. We survey the market that you identified, and then we establish a comparison market value, and to make recommendations with respect to your salaries currently, with what that market is saying. So the steering committee, which is an important part of what we do, is a small group of around six to nine people who help us and help guide us in our process. They include the CCA chapter of representatives, personnel commission representatives, district human resources representatives, and us, confidential tools, supervisors. We meet with them regularly to review the study and to give updates and advice as well. And they give us feedback if we're on track or if we need to make any adjustments. There are some things that, is that working better? Sorry about that. There are some things that this study will not do, and we want to let you know because the employers are always very anxious about this list of items. We are not evaluating the job performance of the individuals whose jobs we're studying. We are not recommending decreases to people's salary. We are not changing employees' work hours. We are not changing their work sites or their work calendars, and we are not recommending employee layoffs. This is not a staffing or an organizational review study in terms, employees are often apprehensive about. So we are really looking at job descriptions and what is the current value of those jobs in the market. We have six phases, and we've completed the first one A, one B, and two, we are about to finish up with section three, and we've already started phase four, which will run until this, until January. So you can see how many classes there were at the start and how many jobs we've added or recommend to be changed. And we do expect to wrap everything up by about a year from now when we finish the last group, which is the management. All right, you can see some of the, we've covered a lot of the job classifications, you can see the list here, already completed in phases one through three. We're starting on the accounting and logistics series, and then we have a few other job groups that are shown. So at the end, we will have covered all of the job classes and these groups of employees, types of occupations that you use to carry out your work. So we gather data by doing a job analysis questionnaire that we give employees, that we ask employees to fill out. We then conduct virtual interviews with as many employees that will join us in an interview as come, and we then prepare a class description draft of any information that needs to be adjusted based on that data that we've gathered. We provide that to the steering committee, they give us feedback. Ultimately, we send that job description out to the employees and their supervisors, whom we've also interviewed, and once we get the final feedback from everyone involved, we prepare final job descriptions, and we give a report to the personnel commission and to the steering committee at the end of each phase. So when we survey the market, we do contact the agencies that have been designated, we calculate a market median average, we analyze the pay relationships within the market and within your district, and recommend any adjustments that we feel would be appropriate based on the parameters that we were given at the, and to compare a comprehensive report on each phase that shows the job information. Thank you for giving the media opportunity to present with you this update of a very important.
Thank you very much. Questions from the board?
I do have a question. Can you please go back to the PowerPoint, I believe it was page either seven or eight?
Seven or eight, did you choose?
I wanted to, I wouldn't go to page eight, please. Okay, on this slide, talk about. Okay, and then to slide nine, please. Okay, that's all, I don't have a question, thank you.
Anyone else on the board? Thank you for your time, Mary.
Thank you very much.
We now go into item seven B, which is the superintendent's goals and objectives. We have a couple of speaker cards on that topic. If we will please, Mr. Burton, you go first, Priscilla, if you'll please stand behind him in the ready spot, and then Mary, you will be third up, if you'll please stand behind Priscilla from that spot.
Well, here we are again, another meeting.
Where do you feel the clock?
I'm ready to go. Here we are again, another meeting in another month. I want to thank everybody for being here, I want to thank you for all doing your jobs and your due diligence. We're here doing our due diligence, and a refresher course, we live in a representative republic. We the people, this is our district. We elect the board members to represent us and oversee the superintendent. The superintendent oversees staff, and I'd just like to reiterate that, so we keep everything straight. I want to have everything clear, this is, seven B is a performance of the superintendent's goals and objectives. I think that you should read that to the public so they know what we're speaking on when you call out seven B. Make it perfectly clear to the citizens who are the proprietors of this district, exactly what we're talking about. We don't, I don't have any clear numbers because you haven't presented any numbers to this, you haven't presented any goals or strategies yet, so it's kind of hard to speak to that or speak against them. So I'd like to say that, do you, does anybody know, I know you're not going to answer this, but do you know what the rate of compensation for the president of the United States of America, the top job in the world is? I didn't think you'd answer, but I'll tell you, it's four hundred thousand dollars. So anything over that is way excessive of asking for raises and stuff. And when there's been problems in this district about performance, I think all those problems need to get straightened out before you talk about any kind of raises. And I'd still like to hear the goals and standards of what's being proposed, but there's problems with world of work. World of work's coming up, and I'll speak on that also. World of work is a debacle that was entered into with a repayment agreement that hasn't been repaid, it's been in default since May twenty-seventh. I know you didn't look up at me because you don't like to hear that, but it's the truth and it's the facts. And if we break down all the numbers, we're going to find that it was a debacle to get the district into this, and there's one person responsible that got that in, it started the debacle to get us into it, and things like that need to be straightened out. The performance is subpar, and if anything, it should be revisited maybe a year from now and see if you can do better. Thank you very much.
Show a little bit of our stars, please.
Thank you, good evening. First of all, I just want to say that I'm really happy that we got to this process. I think the goals and objectives for your superintendent is really important. They're not the same as your district goals. They're how the board interacts with your superintendent. So I hope you have a really good conversation about what that means to his interaction with you, his interaction with the community and things like that. That's what the goals and objectives should be for your superintendent. I think there's some things that you seriously need to consider when Mary brings to you that you have a rush to put things on your board agendas, you have things that Tom brought up tonight about the item L, which was not, it's the first time it's been announced or presented to this board, and it's under consent agenda item. Something's wrong here, there's a lot of concerns that we have. There's conflicts of interest going on, there's Brown Act violations, and it's not with the superintendents, it's with the board president. But I congratulate you for bringing this forward, it seems like a long road, had you just followed your board policies, that would have been accomplished a long time ago. But you don't. So with the board policy workshop coming up, I know that this discussion tonight is under the current board policy. I hope that you will align the goals and objectives with the superintendent's contract, which is not stated in the upcoming board policy. They revised it, I don't know why they're taking that out of public consumption, but you need to make sure that you, my suggestion, you need to make sure that you tie the goals and objectives to his contract for the public transparency. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mary Davis, so thank you. I think this is so important, and I'm really glad that we're getting a chance to address this. First of all, I do want to reiterate for people who may not be aware that he is your sole employee, and as a result, he is also accountable to the taxpayers. One of the things I feel like that this district has gotten away from basics, and raising kids that are critical thinkers and able to function in society, especially if the internet were to go down, you should be able to go to walk into the grocery store and do basic math, and not to have to have a calculator, you should be able to read a basic book and have an understanding. I would tie this also to the test scores, and I would encourage that, since I believe in leading with a carrot, that if he was going to, if you're going to see substantial gains, work something into the contract of if test scores go up by five percent, he could get a bonus for that. I would be agreeable to that, but make it performance-based for a tangible metric that is actually going to help these kids. I also would like to, sorry, my notes. Okay, and then also, students, let's see, take the emphasis off of training of workers, you know how I feel about this, we need critical thinkers, not autotums and robots, or that are good at giving TED Talks. Let them function in life. I would also give them, in light of recent events in world, in the Middle East, that we start studying more world civilization, and I would like to see that tied into his performance as far as having globally literate, and that means world history and studying past battles and events. And then also, I would like to see his, for the ratifying the contract, that thirty day notice, I would like to see that become a formal board policy, and that he is also tied to that in giving you the notification as a performance metric. Thank you so much.
All right, that was the end of the public comment on that particular topic. We now come into an open session on supermax evaluation. So we have a sign evaluation, it's already been completed. David, I was not part of the agenda setting in the court, Karen covered it, so are you taking this from this point, are you presenting yourself?
I prepared a short presentation in your board folder, you have my signed and executed twenty-two, twenty-three performance evaluation exemplary signed by all five of you, thank you very much. And also the notes attached that you shared June about what individual board members like to see differently. So I did my best to incorporate those into a new form, going back to the original format, but building in the pandemic metrics, which were LCAP and the Gallup metrics, but also individual feedback from board members. This is by no means a final draft, I do anticipate a conversation with each of you to help me find in the languages which we get, Anthony, we tried to read twice, and we'll make time for you whenever I do have to read. Here's what I come up with, what I think that you should hold me accountable for, and what I'd be proud to be accountable for as far as strategic goals and success indicators. So I broke them into seventy areas. I didn't list the performance metrics on this slide deck, they're there for you to look at later. If we just stay high level, organizational leadership, the superintendent will work collaboratively with the governing board and cabinet to find resources, create conditions for all stakeholders to deliver on the GOMDA MVPs. The superintendent, and I would say that the board, should model the GOMDA eight promises and access exemplars through interactions with staff, students, family, communicators, and community members. We started this process during the pandemic with the help of the CEO of our consulting company, Hor Scholz, a former McKinsey consultant, Kai Tan Crifendorf, and every staff member in the district, including the board at the time, to get input, to find out what were those things that allowed us to be the only district to open during the beginning of the pandemic? What were those heroic things that we did that made us an exemplary district? So we looked at some of the private industry companies and what they do in terms of non-negotiables, the things that they expected their employees every day to deliver on their results, and we credit Michelle with the MVP, because we didn't know what to call them. What do we call them, service banners? And she said promises, mission, vision, promises. And this was a collaboration of all staff. What we've done over the last several years is create opportunities for all employees to understand and learn about the eight promises, not just the history, but what it would mean to demonstrate those things. Michelle, we should look at what personnel and my COO Fall has done to start to get this really going at the site level.
I'd be happy to, and actually, I'm excited, because just today I received in my email, which even us in this position, recognition and acknowledgement for the word, we do mean something. It means something to each and every one of our employees, and that personal touch when somebody is thinking or recognizing the work they're doing is not only part of our MVPs, it helps people feel good. And just today, I actually received an MVP certificate that my COO Fall had created across our district. across our district to recognize staff for emulating the eight promises. That's just one tiny piece that Mike has done across the district to really recognize and honor our staff who do the incredibly fun, first and foremost, but also challenging work across the district. Uh, and they also contribute to making CAHON Valley the best place to work, which also creates our future employees because they want to work there. And Mike's really done a fabulous job in spreading this recognition, embedding the language across the entire district with our employees. Additionally, he's going out and meeting every single one of our brand new employees in their new position, making sure they have his contact information, checking in with them, seeing what they may need. Um, and it's really been just putting CAHON Valley again, that one step ahead awaiting experience other employees or having other districts.
Thank you. And so thanks to good news for you, Mr. President. This is also my superintendent report because I was able to build in some of the good news into the presentation. So you will have to find a word this evening in order to. And so what does that look like if we're actually leading our organization towards these promises? What does delivering exemplary service look like? This is Mike Pavon last year, a couple of years ago at Johnson, talking about it from his.
Everybody's excited.
Oh, thank you.
So both of our child managers that is celebrating such amazing services. There's other people on campus that are delivering amazingness just in a quieter way.
That is very true. And one person that is showing this amazing CAHON Valley spirit is Daniel Reiner, who is the ninth custodian at Greenfield Middle School. Every night doing these amazing drawings for his students at his school and he's putting them in the classrooms. So when they get to school the next morning, they get this beautiful surprise. And it's so cool. I wish, I, I wish I could find this thing with this. Yeah, he makes the students feel so welcome and like they really belong. He even gets their like recommendation and this kind of vote on their favorite drawings. So that's somebody I really wanted to give a shout out to. Great job, Daniel.
That is really cool. Um, and on the same topic, we really just wanted to thank all of our school custodians because we would be nothing without you. So thank you so much. Thank you.
We can clap for our school custodians. And that's just one example of the MVPs and the Promises on topic one, organizational leadership. Senator Two holds an objective would be employee success and engagement. Superintendent fosters a culture of success and engagement for all employee groups. The superintendent works closely with CDAA, CDEA, CSEA to create open communication and working conditions that support CAHON Valley staff to best meet the needs of students, families, and community. And what I use for those metrics are the Gallup Q12. What I did is I organized them into their four areas. So the Q12 are 12 questions that we ask all employees every year. It gives feedback on management, leadership, and that includes us at the top. And the questions are these, do I know what's expected of me at work? Do I have the materials I need to do my work right? Look down the middle, Q6, someone at work encourages me. Q7, and what my opinion seemed to count. Are we asking our teachers their opinion, giving them discretion on the things they do in their classroom? Eight, is our mission important? And then the last part is really around the culture, about progress and friendship and belonging. And what we did over the first several years of reality was turn our employee engagement from three to one to 10 to one. Gallup saw that as anomaly. And there are things that we do that may be unconventional, that we spend money on, that build culture. And people ask, why would you spend money on a music video? But the purpose is not the music video. The purpose is the process. We don't like this video because we don't like MVC. They're not very nice to us, but we play it anyway.
District, they were also involved in today's flash mob. Yeah, Elkhorn Police were there, Portland firefighters even, some city councilmen.
Those guys were cool.
A jet, you said.
They say that companies that play together stay together and that translates to lots of good things too. And what those things translate are professional learning and culture within the district, system-wide.
CB Conference is multiple days of professional learning work classified as sophisticated. Like to end our conference with something fun, enlightening, motivating. We often give a share, our business begins.
Just a great time to build those relationships with your staff, with your coworkers before the year starts.
We're more than a member here. We're actually a family. I feel we have the opportunity to have so much input in moving forward and everything this district is doing to meet the needs of all of our students.
CB Conference is great because you get a chance to learn new things and connect with people. And there's a lot of things I've done in my 32 years that I think know. But then there's teachers that may hear one year and can teach me new things.
This was a great opportunity for me to see what is going on in the schools, the impact of programs that we have on these students.
What's nice about this experience is it's not just a bunch of people shuffling from class to class. There's a theme. You get a chance to, it makes it more fun. It makes it more lively. It's entertaining. It's not just this, maybe you have to do it, but you want to go to.
We have over a hundred sessions being offered. We have sessions for everybody. We want to make sure everyone goes to food and have a place where they can go learn specifically.
Those purposes did help me a lot, like doing my job in a more professional way, being part of CAHON Valley community. It was really a good experience.
When you're part of the CAHON Valley team, you are part of something bigger than ever else. And I think the big picture is hearing the message, what are we all trying to achieve? And it is the vision. It is our mission. It is about helping kids and helping relationships, unpacking and growing.
And if the employees are successfully engaged in goal area three, which I should be held accountable for, for student success engagement. This language needs work, but what I put into the success criteria are the four LCAP goals. We're at the end of the three-year cycle, Karen, and we're going to go through this process again. Do you have free to explain the process of the goal setting and what to expect as we reconvene next time?
Yes. The LCAP began, the California Restructure exactly how every district was funded under different rules, under, as everything changed in California. We have had two LCAPs. They are re-drafted every three years. So right because David said we're ending now. So we will be looking for feedback on our goals and moving forward. Under those goals, there are expenditures. There are the majority of this LCAP and many are human resources. So it's our staff. What are they doing? What actions and services are they providing as we have metrics to meet each of these goals? So there's a new template. There is a new format, but we're going to be seeking feedback from staff, from parents, from community around our goals. And we'll be writing a new three-year LCAP beginning next year. So we'll have to write it by June 30th of this year.
Thank you. The other metric that I'd like to include are the Gallup Student Poll. And what they measure are student engagement, student hope for their future, current financial literacy, and entrepreneurial aspirations. A lot of small businesses out of East County and those skills can be developed in our classrooms through World of Work. What that translates to, if we merge LCAP goals with the Gallup Engagement Goals, we have the academic and career journey, the mission and me. And what that looks like in an elementary classroom, our kids starting to explore their hopes and dreams, having their culture talked about and accepted. Everyone understanding the learning style. Kids knowing the mindset and how to apply that in vocational identity and the ways to grow and grow.
This is our second annual international festival here at Durin. All of our students have studied a different culture that represents someone in their class. And they have learned about their songs and their food and their traditions and where they're located. And now we can celebrate everyone's culture here today. The strike of learning where our students are learning about someone in their classroom is really important because it helps to build the communities in the classroom. But it also helps to build the community in our larger home area. Because chances are there's someone in our classroom from that country. There's also someone that they're going to encounter somewhere else in our community that is also of that culture and it helps build appreciation and understanding of different cultures.
Well, I think Karen, you know, we say multi-country parents, pretty awesome. It gives all the students a chance to understand where their classmates come from, get back down a little more about their culture and death. And you know, it's pretty awesome as my kids come together and all create, you know, wonderful works of art that they can show and who was on display for anybody else to see as well. So it's awesome.
It's been such a wonderful experience leading up to this event. And especially today where the students came to school dressed in their traditional clothes and share their traditions at home. And I really hope that students recognize we have so many different cultures and really are excited to learn about each other and grow from the experiences they have today.
Well, a hand for Noreika. So it looks like when we take the academic, the social, and the career goals that we have, we're able to see transformation with it at the student level. This is Benosha eight years ago.
Waiting is the most difficult thing in the world because you get to waiting for your future and you only waste time in waiting without knowing what will happen to you and your family. My Tommy nine moved from Rock to Jordan on January 12th, 2011. I spent almost five years in Jordan begging for our supplements to the United States.
That was our first year of TEDx Kids at El Cajon. And it was just before the beginning of the World of Work. Benosha has had the World of Work for eight years. TEDx Kids for eight years. She's now part of our first senior class at Bostonia. And this is your talking about her experience. Same child, eight years later.
I had a TED Talk at the age of 11 as a newcomer to the United States. Was and still is one of our biggest accomplishments so far. Today, I'm attending the new high school established by our district where we have the opportunity to explore our beliefs. In addition, we choose our career path through the World of Work program that we started taking in middle school and elementary school. This program is focused on giving a chance to students to explore the careers that they like by giving them a chance to have an internship two times a week where they can explore their interests and gain experience.
She could be me if she could take my job right now. Area four, I think I should be held accountable for district operations and financial management. And when I think about that, when I first started here 11 years ago, one of the things the board asked me in the interview was, what are you going to do about the charter schools? We were in the climbing moment. We were bleeding kids. And I said, the only thing we can do about charter schools is to be better than them and market and brand it so that people know about it because parents will walk with their feet. And so we invested in program, in one-to-one, we built a digital learning program. But we also marketed and branded it. We captured it on video and showcased it. What this graph shows is between 2013 and 2019, our enrollment. That's incredible. What that equates to is dollars. So rather than think of a budget as a zero-sum game, investing in video and marketing and branding programs, not only increased student performance and engagement, but also increased our bottom line. What we did see though is between 2019, actually 2020, 2023, what did enrollment look like Scott? Not just here, but everywhere.
Yeah, I think everybody lost around 10% of their students statewide. I don't know if they moved out of state, get closer to family at the time, moved to cheaper areas. But it's been a challenge, not just to us, but to pregnant state.
So how much enrollment do you think we lost between 2020, beginning of the pandemic, and 2022?
I think it was around 1,800 kids.
And what's our enrollment at now based on those numbers, 2023?
Well, I think being innovative and creating a high school, we're actually higher than we were before the pandemic.
We are the only district in San Diego County that has increased enrollment through the last three years. It's an anomaly and that's a testament not just to our fiscal team, but for our educators who create these experiences every day that get kids to want to come to school and the parents to trust us to send them here. Thank you, Scott. Number five, after Selma mentioned it, we, we should be held accountable for community relations. Promote the success of the district by acting with integrity, fairness, and ethical manner that fosters trust through open, honest communication with all employees, families, board, and community. What does it look like in the business community?
The CAHON Valley industry is doing amazing things. This is not just innovated from a San Diego perspective. This is innovated from a world perspective.
There could be a large disconnect between an actual workplace environment and what you're wearing, wearing in school.
Oh, right, children, are you ready to go? Remember that, Charlie. And today we're going to go and adventure, talk about podcasting in theater.
It's not every day that we do so much live discussion and conversation. So that was a turning point for us. So I have to thank the World of Work program.
Today we've got a bunch of young scientists have extracted DNA whether it shoots cells. And human is so important as we have human health with the power of the genome. And these young scientists are going to help us make a change.
I think it's important to the community. I think it's important to people. I think it's important to the environment. I love doing it.
This is such an amazing experience just because I've gotten to do what I've always loved to do. It's amazing to show it to children and people thinking about doing it. And you can do anything you put your heart out to.
Really awesome to mentor and help share some things that really helped me along in life. Just the smiles on their faces and the energy, it was just an awesome day. I love it.
And I think that just gives kids some charitable ideas on how to like, think about their skills and their talents and put that to work in the future.
No matter what your strengths, interests, and values are, you have your place here in Seattle.
You know, they say that if you do what you love, you'll never work a day in your life. And so find your happy place, find the thing that you like to do, and then go ahead and work to increase your talent in that thing.
I am so important to these students to know, there's a bright future right here in our hometown.
I grew up in Red Bull, here, and I was adopted and I was taking care of the community of all around me. And now it's my turn to take care of the community.
CAHON Valley is the best place to complete work, plan, and raise money.
Part of the metrics for community engagement, I think, should be parent feedback and parent input. We do have the parent out of Gallup Parent Engagement Poll, which asks a question like, does my child's school deliver on its promises? Do I feel proud as a parent of my child's school? The school's perfect for my child. Talks about teachers knowing their children, the frontingness of the front office. But that's, I think, just surface level. We're developing new metrics with some of the grant funds that we got from CZI Walton to truly measure parent and student engagement. Part of student engagement and community engagement is knowing who the community is. And Anthony, I think you participated in a poverty simulation at Blossom Valley?
Yes.
I think your daughter's here in the audience.
Oh, yes. They weren't paying me dearly enough even before I had a child here. So I mean, those are the people.
Now we gotta make it empty. Now I have a nice place to live. It's just really hard. It really touched me.
Welcome to the poverty simulation at Great Lulu School.
And so those opportunities, home visits, family, teacher teams, things that are based in doing, we truly got to know our families on a deeper level. And what that led to was two years ago, when the US pulled out of Afghanistan, we knew about it because we were connected to our families. And we did something about it. We went to the news. We went on every major news network, including Anderson Cooper, to talk about the things that we needed to do to bring our families home.
They're our students and it's our community and we're worried about it. And so we want them home.
Almost two dozen CAHON Valley students are stranded in Afghanistan, currently unable to make it back home. According to district officials, the families traveled to visit extended family for some break when the Taliban took over. Our ABC tenor reporter Laura Asadeo is at the district where it's anxiously awaiting their safety.
And so with everyone's help here, Joe especially connecting us with Senator Eisen's office, we were able to once identify, utilize the district office as a 24/7 command operative to communicate to our operatives in Afghanistan to get our families to safety. And we got all 26 families home. Number six, Priscilla mentioned this also, board relations, I should be held accountable for. I think that as we look at board goals, we should all be accountable to how we relate to one another and staff. So the metrics are below and I welcome feedback on the things that we can do to improve our board relations. So the metrics are below, and I welcome feedback on the things that we can do to improve our board relations. I think that one of the things that is important to me is that I get to know each of you individually, to know what your interests are, what your values are. And because even though we're one board making decisions at the group, you do have individual thoughts and ideas and perspectives, and I need to understand those because I can best execute and communicate with you as well. I should be held accountable to that. What that looks like then is when family, community, and board are engaged, we can come together during tough times. And this is the video of when we came together at the very beginning of COVID in Coronado. People ask, why did you reopen schools so early? And it was because in our weekly Zoom meetings with parents that our board and unions articulated in, we saw that our families were leaving to go to work, two families, two parents working, and kids at home not doing well. So we opened our schools, starting in April of 2020. One class of eighteen students turned into two, turned into two thousand students by the next month, turned into all twenty-eight schools open by May of 2020.
As soon as school shut down, we knew that we wanted to keep serving our students and our community. And we also knew that was going to take a huge team effort. Everyone from child nutrition to IT department, teachers, principals, students, everyone was ready and willing to show up for our students.
I did wait, you know, my health concerns. When I waited that decision, it was just overwhelming that I felt like I needed to be there for the children. Looking at their faces and their smiles as they come and they say thank you. That experience right there, there are no words for it.
Since 2014, we've been working on our blended learning model. We're working with the students in person with their learning, but we're also working with them on their computers. And that transitions right now completely towards distance learning. It's allowing us to keep those personal connections and allowing us to work with the students through our computers to continue the success that we have with our education.
Tell me, I'm forced in my life, it's that embarrassing. It's been a little stressful for us now, knowing exactly what we're going to do. It's going to be a work. This program is a bit of less than it was.
This is a great way to share our deals with each other, making our world a better place.
Having the opportunity to remember and send their children back to an environment that they're familiar with and hadn't seen and were missing so much was really helpful.
Our schools are a place where students go for safety, for food, and then security in that routine. In a time of turmoil in our lives with COVID, schools have just really become a safe place for students.
You know, some Cajon Valley youth in school, district students return to class today.
When I'm wearing that school, it makes me feel, I think, more, I try to, I think, even.
Every single day, my students say it was the best day ever. They are so excited to be here. I can tell they're smiling, I'm reading their masks. So it's just been nice to be able to be back doing what we love in this new adaptive way.
Cajon Valley School District is the largest in the state to open for in-person learning thanks to one of the few waivers that was granted.
Really seeing the students connect with careers that they had never heard of before and now align with and aspire to is really exciting. It really shows that we're on the right path and that this can be really impactful in their future.
There are families all over, ones who are dealing with this when it comes to taking family and these are not in the classroom.
Today was the very first in-person field trip for a K-14 school since the start of 2019. True help, Mr. Parker.
It's wonderful to see that we are able to do this safely together and learn in a way that supports our community and supports the health of all our students and staff.
Thank you, Cajon Valley, for everything. And I keep rocking.
And that really encapsulates all the goals working together. The final goal was something that a couple of you asked me to consider in personal growth development and wellbeing, healthcare, taking vacation, and being away. So I took that seriously and put that into the evaluation form. And I will be held accountable for doing that as well. And that is the end of my report. In summary, the priority areas and goals would be organizational leadership, employee success and engagement, student success and engagement, district operations and financial management, community relationships, board relations, and then personal growth development, wellbeing.
Thank you, David. So we have, as a board, we have an eight-page document that has thirty-two subsections to assess under a new, under new matrices for assessment inclusive of up to eight additional areas for just open comments by the board. And I know this is a work in progress, but it's much more similar to when I was first on the board, the matrices that we used then before we swapped over. And this is obviously much more rigid per se. But I have no doubt that we'll work through that and have clarity for you as pointing out, being our one and only employee, to see your direction. I'll reserve additional comments and open up to the board for comments on David's goals and objectives. And then keep in mind that we will reevaluate in June for next school year. Who would like to go first?
I'll go first. So in the handout I gave to the board, it includes a highlighted version of the superintendent's agreement. And page thirty-seven of that handout is what I'm reading from now. If anyone wants to follow along, this is from the superintendent's agreement describing his duties. And E. says, reporting regularly to the board with information regarding student learning and providing analysis of student achievement and test scores. F. Reviewing policies adopted by the board and making appropriate recommendations to the board for addition, deletion, or modification. And I know this is a backwards-looking item. It's worth mentioning, we were asked to approve six hundred and seventy-eight new policies and fourteen hundred pages of policies because for a number of years, this wasn't done. Fortunately, I was put back to another meeting. But I think that reviewing policies adopted by the board and making appropriate recommendations to the board for addition, deletion, or modification. Reading from him from the superintendent's contract, or actually, sorry, going to the next page. Do you have a question? I'm getting there. This is the discussion. So the board holds the superintendent accountable to manage the district consistently to improve board policies, goals, objectives, and criteria. And then section six evaluation. Prior to the beginning of each school year, the board superintendent will need to establish priority goals. And it's the task to be addressed during the year. The governing board shall evaluate the superintendent using a scale of one to five. A rating of three is considered adequate performance. The board will agendaize a meeting to discuss the evaluation of the superintendent. The superintendent's evaluation will be based on the duties described in this agreement, the superintendent's job description, and board adopted priorities, goals, and tasks. And then moving on to page three of salary. To the superintendent, receive an adequate annual evaluation as discussed in section six, which I just read scaled one of the. Superintendent will be entitled to receive an increase in salary. An adequate evaluation means an overall rating of three or higher. I don't see the rating in this attached evaluation.
Can you incorporate those things?
And then the question, the first question. Regular, reporting regularly to the board information regarding student learning and providing analysis of student achievement and test scores. So that analysis of student achievement and test scores from the prior year, and I think from this current year would be sort of the base of how we would start to establish the goals for the upcoming year because it really always seems to go back to student academic achievement. And it says test scores here under contract. So do you have any reports to the board regarding student learning, you know, from last year to this year, or however you would like to report that to us? And so we can use that to discuss goals with regard to student learning and sort of metrics that we would like to baseline metrics, which was actually, not to jump around, but the original evaluation form, I noticed. It started with student achievement. This one starts with the eight pillars. And under student achievement, it said establish a baseline metric so that we can go off of that in following years. And I noticed in the new proposed version, I know it's a work in progress, but that's completely removed. There's no, there's no establishing like a baseline literacy or math proficiency metric.
Wait, there's his. Karen's ready to talk about it.
Yeah, that's part of the function of the LCAP committee. David is on the committee, and it does have very detailed metrics around each of the goals, all that are required by the state, all that are local indicators, a deeper dive into academics, things around culture, goal two, and the innovation around world report. So it's really in the LCAP. We also do a presentation when all of the information kind of triples out from the state for the California dashboard. Those are all the required outcomes. It is the state math and ELA scores from CAS. It is your attendance, it's your suspension data. All of that comes out week by week by week. And a presentation is brought to the board when that's done. I believe it's in January or February. So that presentation happens every year, the LCAP update, the report itself. There are a lot of detail, that's where all of our data lies in terms of really detailed academic reporting. While it says the superintendent, that's where it lives. I just want to make that clarification.
So in essence, we would need to, if that's what the board wanted to do, copy the LCAP goals and put, and make those, attach those somehow to the superintendent's agreement or goals. I know the LCAP has a budgeting process required by law. It allows parents to hold the district accountable to educational outcomes of the students. This scenario, the board elected by the people is attempting to hold the superintendent accountable to the educational outcomes of the students. But with regard, and this is the way I visualize it, with regard to the student, the superintendent's performance in his jobs specifically as opposed to like the district-wide. Now, district-wide goals would be based, you know, we establish a baseline literacy, for example, and say, okay, here's our literacy, baseline literacy rate district-wide, it's in the LCAP. Do we, you know, is there a goal for that to improve for the superintendent? And then I think it was mentioned earlier in public comment, if there's a marked improvement there, some sort of performance bonus I would be obviously open to. I wouldn't mind paying a million dollars a year if we were, you know, above state averages on literacy and math proficiency.
Yes, you would.
So the question, I guess, with, for purposes of the superintendent's goals, going back to his agreement with the district, student learning and analysis from the superintendent, not just in the LCAP, but providing analysis of student achievement and test scores. I would like to see that to establish that baseline that was in the old version. And then the board decide, you know, what sort of metric of improvement would we like to see in these areas with regard to student achievement?
So to clarify, I want to make sure that I'm clear. With David's comments and Karen's comments and my own understanding of the LCAP, which it comes with all that material information, year-over-year improvement, right? That's where you're coming from?
Uh, no, this would be, this would be specific to the superintendent's agreement, his employment agreement, his, I mean, his position in this organization is completely unique. So the LCAP goals could serve as some information for what he's doing, but it's the performance of his job in particular.
But you talked about goals, right? If the goal is to improve literacy and improve outcomes, that's measured by the LCAP. Is there another measurement tool that you can think of that you want to add or include as part of the rubric, in which case then we can address that knockoff? I don't know, maybe we have a call if there's yet another rubric that we can do to function and engage that particular rise as well. And I would really appreciate it if we don't have participation at this point in time from the public. It occurs to me a chance, I know you have, you pulled the card, I think you pulled the card. You come up and talk to us at that point in time. So other comments or thoughts there, Anthony?
Literacy, math, math proficiency, CAS scores, and analysis from, you know, the superintendent on student achievement and test scores. You know, framing him to the board so we understand how we want to set that baseline. I've attended and read news articles in the Cajon Valley.net news. And what the superintendent's saying in those is, in August of 2022, he reached out to the community and the community said they would like to see other measures of student success as opposed to traditional metrics, was the line. So CAS scores have kind of fallen out of the front and center view for teachers in this district, for example. But what I'm hearing, even at D-LAC and the LCAP committee, is parents are almost singularly focused on literacy rates, math proficiency rates. I'm not hearing them say, we would like to look at something as opposed to traditional metrics. We would like you to measure our child, you know, our students' happiness levels. That's one thing that keeps getting reported. And there's actually a video that was shown at the LCAP at another movie night with the district employees saying, what does it look like to measure happiness? So there's also that part where we're, it seems like we're still trying to engage in some novel social experiment to measure kids' happiness. And we're not focused on CAS as much. It's a moment in time. So like really just baseline measures of academic achievement. Wherever we want to pull those from, LCAP and CAS, and then tie them into the job performance for the superintendent moving forward.
Right. Again, we'll look at whatever, I would think that we're going to look at whatever available rubrics to get out for purposes of academic achievement and competency. And again, this is a district that's moving towards competency-based learning, which is in and of itself based on competency. So it's in the title. So I think it's important to understand what that actually looks like. Um, other comments, Anthony, or are you done? I was hoping to.
Another comment, just reviewing the policies adopted by the board and making appropriate recommendations to the board for addition, deletion, or modification. This, this was way too much for us. If it hasn't been done for six years, do you expect the board to do it in one night? And again, I'm trying to look back and offer. Yeah, one night, one board meeting. It was a first reading and adoption, fourteen hundred and four pages, six hundred and seventy-eight policies, no track changes. Yes. Well, because we can't, we, I talked to you, but I can't talk to Jim and Joe until we're sitting here. Two and a half weeks this was sent to us, yes, and it was a bit next for tonight.
And then we pushed it off.
And then we pushed it off like another month. So I'm not sure what, what your visual aid is supposed to be in either of, it's not. I'll explain it to you. Yeah, so let me go back to the contract. Let me go back to the contract, reviewing policies adopted by the board and making appropriate recommendations to the board for addition, deletion, or modification. This isn't appropriate.
Okay, so you have an opinion on that, which is fine.
Yeah, that's my opinion. Identifying opinions versus whatever, that's fine, but.
Well, that's all you're saying, Anthony, is that you, because you got too much to read too late when it can get in the deck.
All right. I said, we didn't have to update our policies for six years. The staff's in a spreadsheet asking us to make six hundred and seventy-eight individual selections to update all of these policies, no track changes, no track revisions. Staff said they've been working on it for a year, changing our board bylaws, board policies. That, the first I heard of it was two and a half weeks ago. And I sat there and I thought, what are the odds that the majority of us, let's say, go through and click six hundred and seventy-eight times and compare without any track revisions, without any track changes, what the difference is between our existing policy and the new policy? So appropriate, right?
We're going to argue that now, and now we have a red line version. And we pushed it off by a full month, so we now have six weeks for five weeks.
We're going to do that in a month? Is that the plan? Because that's unreasonable and inappropriate. And the point.
Congress knows this in the day.
We're still have. They have, they have. We're still, okay, they have, they have staff members. It's, it's a whole different deal. How many staff members does a congressional person have? A hundred, two hundred?
Just to clarify, they're going over board policy revisions, they, they happen just about, let's say, every other year. And so policy is revised on a regular basis.
But it hasn't happened in many years. We even have policies that were placed on our books in 2020, right? Like A R five one four five point three that we didn't even adopt as a board. We didn't ask parents for input on that, even though fundamentally governs the relationship between a district staff member and a child. But the point is, bringing, I'm bringing it back. Thank you, Karen. Yes, so I'm reading from his, his contract and that's what I'm talking this with. Tonight on our agenda, as in, you know, it's been a pattern, we have many things, including the fifteen thousand dollar board membership for him that the invoice was issued before our last board meeting. It became due a few days ago. So again, like we get, we're treated as an afterthought as a board, in my view. And I would like to see that as part of his goals, that we see things in advance before we're obligated. And that we get a reasonable and appropriate amount of time to be able to work live like this. And then we have track revisions and modifications when, when that happens. If it didn't happen for six years, I understand, but maybe give us a year to work through that then. So, but those are my comments.
Comments from other board members?
I just want to say I agree with Anthony on that. It's not just reading it. The end of the day, whatever is the update can affect the kids. And we are, me, you, me and Anthony, like, we don't know all the policies. We didn't read it before, maybe for you guys, like, you know what's there, maybe. Some change not gonna, like, affect, it's gonna take maybe like one hour, but for us, maybe we need more time to read the whole thing. Me, me too. I need like, I'm just gonna say, like, for me, I need at least one year to understand everything here in those policies. Of course, I can see the update, but I want to know everything else in this policy, so please, maybe, I don't know, John, if you can do something about that. And I don't think one month is enough, or one workshop is enough for us to understand everything.
Additional comments? Again, certainly back to superintendent goals and objectives. Got a little bit off topic.
So I, I think this is a definitely great conversation starter that we did for things together. There is still a lot of things that I think we will need to kind of vet out. But, but I think just like our computer systems needed an update, our board needs a new operating system. And so I think that there's some great ways where here, these, these board policies are important, but we're kind of putting the cart before the horse. We're still not able to get to a place where we can fully discuss things on a great level. We're working towards it. And I love this because we are having conversations, not always agreeing, which is okay, that's the diplomacy. I think that's what this is about. And I think having this, talking about our board relations on the strategic goal is a big part, right? As we're going to be working through this, where we can really work on what we need to do too. I think we need to work on the board's communication, what our expectations are, what are, what, how do we want to work as a board? What is it that we expect from Dr. Misha? What is it we expect? And, and I think these strategic goals are a part of that journey, but I think we also need to have a role countable in moving towards a communication, which I'll talk a little bit more on that board. But thank you for this. I think there's a lot here. I appreciate the comments that have been said. I think going back and looking at the previous page that Anthony provided, understanding what this, what all we're looking at. So we have it all in one place. I think that's always good to have those discussions. So, thank you.
Joe?
No, I, I want to appreciate what the, what the public had brought forward as far as their concerns about the evaluation. And I'm actually pleased with just the comments that were made. And I, I see that the board is moving into a direction where we are trying to listen to, to the public more as to what they're concerned about. And then work with our superintendent to see that he is working also to incorporate those concerns. Now, we're not going to fix everything overnight and it's not going to be perfect, but I do see a measure of working together, so I'm very grateful for that.
And my comments are associated with this rubric being vastly more detailed and extensive. I think it is appropriate at this point in time to shift from what we were doing during COVID with those more sweeping lines. It would require a quick ability to pivot and the ability to say no. Not that we don't want to lose that, but now we do have a little bit more time to take a breath, figure out what we need to move forward. I think that the topics and the concept behind the new rubric are important. If it needs a one through five category from the contract, I think we can put a one through five in there. I think that needs to be done. I think Anthony wants that done in the correct fashion. In so much as the board policies are concerned, yeah, that's a lot to read. I mean, there's no doubt about that. The reality of it is, though, when you come on to a board, Juliana, just as we all did at one point, I grew all new board members at some point. I've been here now for seven years with Karen. I, by no stretch of imagination, know what, what people who have been on boards longer than I have know. And I'm fairly active in trying to learn what's going on. I did ask and request a red line version of that, so that we do know, as Anthony said, what were the changes? What was the original language? What's the updated language? Do we like the original language better? Do we want to change the language for now? I don't think it's an unreasonable ask that we get that done by December, but if it is an unreasonable ask, I'm not, I'm not tied to trying to get that done by December. Just, everybody should know that. We need to get it done when we get it done, so that we can absorb and understand what's in there. This is not Obamacare with, you think that's a lot, right? Remember that stat to date? Now, that was a visual aid, Anthony. Like ten thousand pages or whatever it was. You know, that, that was show through in one night. Regardless of how much stuff there is in Congress, that was not going to get wrecked, right? It was vote, vote on it so we can figure out what's in it. I don't think that we're anywhere near that with this. But if we need to push it to January, if you can mind, we have workshops coming up, push it to January. If that's not enough, we have to go anywhere. But let's make sure that we understand each aspect of it, right? How do you eat the element, just like Karen said, one bite at a time? So, nonetheless, so, we work on it. Somebody give me an email in a couple of weeks and say, hey, I'm gonna need more time. Need more time. By no means is that a priority that it must be done on day set server. Unless I'm being told otherwise, I don't believe in this. So that said, I like the rubric. I like that it's more detailed. I like that it is vastly more extensive. I like that it ties more into the verbiage of the contract. And I think it's important because, again, you are our only employee, but you are the point of the district. For better or for worse, right? For better or for worse, order back gives more credit or less credit than they should, and the head coach gives more credit or less credit than they should. Everybody else is just working underneath them, right? Now, order back doesn't matter to anybody or shouldn't unless you're feeling a problem. And the coach certainly doesn't play on the game. But what happens in this district still flows up to you. Hence the LCAP. Those are my comments on it. So I appreciate it. And now we do it forward.
Mr. President, one question. I don't mean to add comment, but are we here, are we going to jointly identify performance goals for the next year at this time?
This is, this is a discussion aspect. And, you know, I have no problem, Anthony. Actually, if you want to throw, I thought you kind of threw out your, what you wanted for a performance goal, but if you want to identify them more specifically, please do so. We'll put them in the notes or in the minutes. And then we can, then we'll follow up, because when we come back to, again, evaluate in June, we're gonna have those moving forward.
But I would appreciate. If each of you receives an electronic copy to just redline on, don't like, don't like, add this. We can incorporate some of the easy things like the five column to your scoring system. A lot of those things are easy. And then I'll take your individual feedback and then try to bring back again what I hear from collective. This is just the first attempt.
That makes sense and it wouldn't violate round act issues either, because it wouldn't be us collaborating. It'd be us one-on-one going back to superintendent. Does that make sense to you? Does that work?
Yes. Now, as far as the joint identification of performance goals to the public, do we want to have a board discussion of, you know, do we want to see a literacy of five points? I don't know what the answer is, if we have to the board, you know, jointly identifying those goals. Do we want to see, you know, measures of student happiness improved? Obviously, I know where I stand on that, but where does the board stand on that?
I like having kids, so.
I don't know that the government should be measuring their happiness in a novel experiment is the, is my concern, but anyway, I don't need to get off topic, but the joint identification of goals, maybe it's a board discussion. I know there's been other discussion, or I don't know, but it's getting.
Actually, I think maybe you and I missed a couple of questions. I don't know what got in your way, but I think we should talk about it because running an organization, teacher for the ones that are going to be responsible and, and get credit for achievements and progress. I have to create the conditions and get the resources. So it's a, it's a different way of looking at, at what I do in relation to what everybody else does. Do people feel supported? Do they have the resources? You know, so there, it's, it's more complex.
Yeah, for sure. Like you're, you're directing resources to classrooms at the end of the day, right?
Well, the things we do collectively, including the herb field of our schools, everything matters. And so what I tried to do in this document was look at the organization as a whole, and this is what a CEO evaluation would look like. It's, it's broad and it's complex, but we can certainly put in performance metrics and I'll think in individual feedbacks and board members.
I do like the idea of us maybe redlining and sending in that information, so then we can discuss all of those options. I mean, we're not adopting it here today, but we will need to look at it in comparison with the, the board docs and all of that. So, so we have a lot of work yet ahead of us and.
All right, so, go ahead. One thing I wanted to identify is baseline metrics for student achievement. That's the prime, that's the most important. I don't know that we have the information here to, to support identify that, but I think that's really important. It kind of goes back to our onboard bylaws, the superintendent's agreement, our you know, obligation to the public as far as, as that goes.
All right, so everybody's homework is to review this document, give additional comments, critique on it, back to David directly. Do not share with additional board members or with round act issues unless you want one conversation with one of the board members. That's up to you. And then David, bring it on back for purposes of, you know, just to plan, look as to what your, your, your overall new rubric will look like. And then we'll, once they will adopt it moving forward, that's how we'll, we'll evaluate moving forward. Everybody sound good? Any questions? Okay. All right, moving down to seven C. We do have some speakers on seven C. It's the same three speakers as our last one, I'm gonna shift out of the order. Priscilla, if you'd like to, please go first. David, if you'd like to go second. Mary, you don't still, still come in on the third spot, please.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Repayment plan. Repayment plan was an instrument that I think Anthony, our Wally insisted that the board look at, since there was a transaction between the WOW Foundation and the district. And I know that Scott keeps talking about it being symbiotic between him and, and the district and the WOW and all of that stuff, but they're really supposed to be two entirely independent agencies. So, the board was not given the opportunity to perfect the repayment plan. They were not given the opportunity to extend the repayment plan. And it became in-house and a unilateral decision all along the way. So it was behind closed doors for the most part. The public didn't get to follow how it was repaid. And then there was different repayment ideas and let's tag this to repay it, which were not in the original. The things you brought back to repay it were not in the original grant, like the Vables and the things like that. So I don't know if you've repaid it, how it was repaid, but what I'd like to see is the actual budgets to actuals on your summit conference, how many people came from outside this district to attend? What were your profits? What were your proceeds? And the fact that, I know that you've always raged about WOW and the monies and the grants and the things that you're getting, but the idea that you had to borrow from your own district to put on that summit? I just think this board really needs to be asking, what are, what are the, the finer points in putting that together when you couldn't even get a budget on time? You had no idea what it was going to cost you to put that on. That's what I would like to see, is this board take a little more active role in your budget, your finance and the costs that are going out the door. And, and that you would have the, the excitement that's supposed to go along with WOW with all the pomp and circumstance. I'm about money management and process. And I'd like to see this board be a little bit more about that as well. So with the repayment plan, I don't know if I'm done, with the repayment plan, I also want to know if you're going to use grants that you've received, were they, are they allowable to pay past debt? Or are they, are they, that's where I'm looking for. They're designed to pay just one specific thing and not past debt. So if you could, at the board, ask that question. Thank you.
David? Mary, if you'll please stand behind David so he can forward. Oh, you want to say, if you want to say it back, it's fine, guys. Gotcha.
Okay, wow. Ready to go again?
Boom, go.
Okay, wow. I think it has potential, but I see a lot of problems. I see, seen a lot of misfires, a lot of missteps, and a lot of questions. And first and foremost, it deserves transparency. It deserves a citizen or a parent on that board. So this, not, it's not just staff, it's not just the people that created this. It needs to be exposed to the public. It's, this is a public entity and the citizens are the overseers. And first and foremost, you need someone replaced on that board that is in this audience, or a citizen, or a parent, or someone that represents the people. Right now, the people aren't represented. We've got people that have conflicts of interest and that, that's first and foremost. I'd like to see a full audit of exactly how much the district expends of district funds on this program. And, and I, as I told you before, months and months ago, this is a, a rehash of Career Day that I had sixty years ago. And, and it worked sixty years ago, and now it's got a PowerPoint, so it's a little plausier, a little flowery. And, and it, it's, it's great. But, but the attention span of a, a child between kindergarten, eighth grade, is not going to make their choices of their future career at that point in life. A high school person isn't going to make their decision where they're gonna go, except for maybe five percent are going to decide where they're, what they're gonna do, whether they're gonna go in the military, whether they're gonna be a doctor, a lawyer, whatever. Those lawyers are very admirable. That's for you, Ms. Currier. So anyways, I, I'd like to see some more transparency. I'd like to see exactly how that conference break, broke down and exactly where the dollars are from. I, I, I hear a lot of different things, but until you guys put out the black and white numbers, we don't know for sure. And we get this rumor and that rumor, but let's get the transparency out, tell the people exactly what it costs. Thank you.
Take your time, Mary.
Hi, Mary Davis. And again, I will also reiterate transparency, the key word and a recurring theme that seems to be with this board. I will real quickly.
Um, I will real quickly touch on the prior incidents. So the presentation that David made, that should have been an attachment on, available to the public. It should have been disclosed before we were allowed to talk so that we could, um, nobody had in mind and had a chance to respond. So again, um, going to documentation, uh, the same thing with this. A lot of fuzzy details, we didn't get this. And so I feel like that all of the terms and conditions should have been made available in a contract for public disclosure as board attachments. So that we know the terms and conditions, the fact that they're even having to take a loan out was very problematic. Um, this, any program we run should be self-sufficient and not require, uh, the left hand to help the right hand along and then wait for one day this magical payback that may or may not come. Uh, another thing that I have not seen addressed that's very concerning to me is that of opportunity cost. Had you loaned that money to any other organization, you would have done that at market interest rate and there would have been a cost to that. You would have expected a return on your investment. That would have penciled out, that would have been disclosed to the public. But instead you did this magical loan that, what is it, zero percent interest? I don't even know what the details are. Um, it was basically almost a gift of public funds to another entity. And I would like to see your business, your bank separated in different baskets, a lot more transparency, accountability. Run it as a contract just as if it were a separate entity. And make everything above board a disposable to the public so that we were aware. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now going to the WOW discussion, I believe that was with you Scott or is there somebody else?
Yeah, just, I think as, as, as Kenny said, there was no like comeback as to what happened to that repayment plan. And I want to report that all the money was repaid back. The last eighty thousand, eighty-two thousand dollars approximately was paid back. Uh, the foundation with David's efforts received a one million dollar, um, grant that has not publicly been announced yet, so I can't explain what that is. But the grant did allow repayment of that overage that was spent. And that has been paid as of October and there's no balance due back to the district. So the foundation, one hundred percent reimbursed the district.
Question, um, when our superintendent goes out and attains a, uh, a grant. And does the board have any oversight on how those monies are used? Because as I understand, it was about a million dollar grant, about eight percent of that was deemed, decided to repay a delinquent debt since May. Does, does the board have oversight on grants that are given to the district or the foundation and the superintendent of our district being the base of it? I assume the Conrad Previs Foundation wants to give us money, Chance Zuckerberg wants to give us money because we are a district of fifteen, eighteen, sixteen thousand students, many newcomers, many socio-economically disadvantaged. Lots of districts get grants in the millions, right? But it seems in other districts, when those grants come in, that the board does get some level of oversight on how those monies would be spent to, um, have a positive impact on student achievement really is the length we've seen. I understand we have to look through whenever we spend, spend the dollars, look at it through in, in terms of how does this benefit students of the Tahoe Valley District? Now, in the past, you said that the WOW Foundation is like, um, symbiotic. I think I might use the wrong term, but that our goals are identical essentially. So, so does the board have oversight when we say, hey, we're going to take a chunk of this grant that the superintendent of the district got and use it to satisfy old debt?
Grants are different. There are several grants, some that come from the state, some that come from not-for-profits. The ones that we applied for recently around World of Work and expansion and developing metrics with Chance Zuckerberg, the Walton Family Foundation, those are very specific. When we write to it, we tell them what we're going to spend money on and they approve it. So they, they want to see the expenditure first, how are you going to use this fund? The Previs Foundation grant, which we cannot publicly announce, the terms of, um, are discretionary towards the expansion of WOW. The reason we opened the foundation was because the board chair of the foundation asked us to open the foundation because we like the World of Work program and we want to see it expanded.
When did the board ask you to open the foundation?
The Previs Foundation?
No, the World of Work Foundation. Are you talking about this, this board or the Previs Foundation?
The Previs Foundation.
Got it. Um, and if they are state grants, would the board have oversight on those?
The board oversees expenditures. So if there was expenditure associated with a grant, yes, that would come to your approval.
So in, in this conference, the Educators Effectiveness Grant, which came from the California Department of Education, was retroactively tapped for about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now, the California Department of Education Educators Effectiveness Grant, I did some research on it and it was very specifically earmarked toward teacher training to improve academic outcomes for students. It was, uh, there was a public presentation given because that's California Department of Education requirements on that grant. Yet, yet, this board did not find out that that was tapped for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to send a hundred and seventy teachers to the WOW Foundation Conference from this district. Until after the conference had already taken place, it was put in a warrants and wire transfer. So in that scenario, why wasn't the board involved in, in deciding whether, hey, do we want to use this educator effectiveness grant money that the state gave us? Fundamentally to improve reading and math literacy, we want to use a hundred and fifty thousand of it, which goes well beyond the annual allocation for any of the planned buckets that were presented to the public and, and just, and send people to, to the WOW Conference from our district to learn something about WOW. So why wasn't the board involved in that decision prior to?
That, that's why you hired me and that's why I hired staff to use discretion around goals and how we receive these. That's the district staff versus the district board, which over provides oversight and oversees me as an employee. But decision-making at the local level like that, that's the discretion of our principals, of our assistant superintendent.
When, when a public, so, so you're the secretary of this board, you're, you're the secretary of the WOW Foundation. So did, did you make the decision to hit the educators effectiveness grant for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to send our staff to the conference?
I would say that I'm involved. That was net services expenditure, so Karen oversees that grant. But yeah, these align with our goals. Actually, it directly aligns with the LTAC goals of our curriculum.
But, okay. So the board wasn't involved, but it's okay that the board wasn't involved because the staff has the ability to make that expenditure, am I, am I understanding that correctly? The authority rather.
Your question doesn't make a lot of sense to me. I think we have a board workshop on roles and functions and procedures. And it's something that we talked about since we started last year and along.
I, I can rephrase the question. The board wasn't involved in the decision to tap the educator effectiveness grant for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to send people to the conference?
The board adopted, approved the budget, right, from top in.
It didn't, it was done after the conference. So the conference happened on March twenty-fifth?
I'm talking about the conference budget, I'm talking about the overall budget of the district we approved, correct?
Well, this one was, this community, the educator effectiveness grant was presented in a public meeting of the budget, a four-year, four-year budget to the public and, and adopted and approved by the board. However, the thresholds were far exceeded just to send teachers to that one conference and we weren't, we weren't involved in the decision. So I'm trying to figure out where, where the boards is involved in, in, in deciding where grants go. Are they, do they go to pay off old debts? Do they go to charge a hundred and seventy staff members from our district with full price for the conference, not the early rate of eight hundred and fifty bucks a pop? To send them there, like, I, I would like, actually, a lot of that decision making to go back to the board. So we say, hey, we have these grants from the state, we have these grants from the Conrad Previs Foundation, which I don't think would happen in a vacuum. They happen because we're in the Tahoe Valley and we have schools. I think that the board should really be involved in, in directing where those funds go, through the lens of student achievement.
So. Grant funding, as David explained, especially on, on many events, is you have to tell them how you're spending it. That, that's the general principle of most grant writing. I don't know a lot about grant writing, it's going across my desk once or twice perhaps. But that's my understanding of what David just explained. So if you have a different interpretation of what he just said, that's one thing. As far as the overall budget go, the board dictates the overall budget. Then we allocate the budget to the specific departments, depending upon buckets of money. Therefore allocating the authority to spend those buckets of money within those interior budgets, whether they be as services or otherwise. So if there is additional oversight that you want the board to have, I have no issues with that at all. Do you, David? Okay, you and I would be on the same page with that. I just, I think we might be saying the same thing in different terms. Um, so let's make sure that we get on, on that same page. If you can meet with David, that would probably be good so as that the, the vocabulary is the same. Um, that, that might be a vocabulary issue that we come across. And then perhaps Karen on this particular one might be good to sit in on that particular discussion. I'm happy to sit in on the discussion too, because if there's two of us, it doesn't violate the round act issue. And Karen, do you have anything else you want to add at this point?
No, this came up at the last meeting and I just want, when you apply for a grant, the state grant that you're referring to educators effectiveness, when it came out, um, it was a six-year grant. There were eight categories. You were to choose your categories of what you think you will spend money on over six years. We identified the categories. There were questions about some categories. We didn't choose all. Then we had estimated budgets to those categories. In the six-year focus, whether you're a business owner or in education, you do not know what you may need in six years. You don't know that you have, might need a literacy coach, you might need to double the literacy budget, you don't know. I cannot tell you a crystal ball where every cent would go in a six-year estimation of a grant of that size. But we did choose with board approval the topics. And we did narrow those, we put estimated budgets, the best we could. Literacy has taken a much greater role in what we are focusing on, what we're spending money on. And those budgets will probably change again next year. So I understand you're pointing out World of Work, but there are lots of things we have changed in the, my, if I'll take responsibility, estimation of a six-year budget around feedback from families, from staff. I just need to note, it is reasonable to have some flexibility in what happens with these grants. And you cannot, I cannot predict for six years what would be a priority from year to year to year. And as we're seeing with literacy, we are seeing changes.
Yeah, I can appreciate that too, because I've seen it with literacy, the, the community coming and saying, we want a focus on that. So then those budgets would get redirected. But the thing that happened here, however, if the board, the public weren't involved, it was just a decision made to tap that grant for one hundred and fifty grand. Just in that World of Work Conference, you're talking, if you had the eighty thousand. Now, has that, has that grant been funded and has that grant been funded at this point? October, right?
Five hundred thousand of a million has been funded.
So is it about four hundred and twenty thousand dollars is sitting in the World of Work Foundation at this moment?
Correct.
So, uh, Mr. President, that, that four hundred and twenty thousand, I think, should also, and the five hundred thousand that comes should also come under public and board, um, oversight, particularly the board. Because I think that million is coming to us because of our students at the end of the day, in large part, right?
Depending upon how, I would say that the extent of the grant was written and then all was produced, but no, I don't disagree with David. However, I'd like to get some more information on that, Scott, if you can, please.
But I think, um, one of the things that I want to clarify is that, um, I think you kind of brought it down, Jen, it's kind of been the buckets. But I think the, the principals at their school sites also get the opportunity to send their, um, teachers and staff to, they get to choose who they get to send. So being a hundred and seventy, I, I mean, what would the breakdown be for each school? That would be my question.
I think we, we've exhausted this particular issue. I've asked Scott to, obviously now giving a little bit of background, some updates. Uh, Anthony and possibly myself, so now David and Karen on that particular expenditure angle, or at least getting the language on some grant issues. So I'm going to move on now to eight A unless there's any objection moved, David.
One, one quick clarifying question. Is, is the WOW Foundation an educational foundation?
Even if the bylaws, it's meant to support this school district.
So it, it's a, because educational foundation shows up under our bylaws, so that's, I was looking at that and going, is, is WOW an educational foundation?
Yeah, I don't know if it's educating, it's a five oh one C three foundation. And in the bylaws, it spells out what the purpose of the foundation is. And that's why I kind of said it's symbiotic in a way, because we have to work and value our, better than our students in the end. And that's the whole point of the foundation. And it was to bring in grants like this, is the purpose of not giving the district its own dollars.
Yeah, no, those, those education foundations are, are there for that reason and in our board bylaws. Now, on that, uh, real quick, it says, um, the board, the board can work with the educational foundation in determining the purposes for which funds may be used uh, to meet the changing needs of the district and its students. So I think we have the framework there. Sorry to belabor the point, Mr. President, but to, to move forward and, and bring that back under board oversight.
Moving to eight A, so let's move on. It's recommended the governing board approve the recommendation in administrative hearing panel in the matter of student twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, age zero three. We have a motion. Motion by Karen, we have a second.
Second.
Second by Anthony. Please vote. Pass is five O. Moving to eight B. It is recommended that the governing board approve the recommendation of the readmission hearing in the matter of student twenty twenty-third, twenty-three down to twenty-four, I'm sure that's. Uh, RH zero one. We have a motion on this matter. Motion by Joe, we have a second. Second by Julie Hahn. Please vote. Pass is five O. Moving to consent items, this is nine.
Just now getting there.
Right. You had nothing to do with that at all, Anthony. But getting to nine, I know Anthony, you want to pull nine L on this entirely, is that correct?
I would like to pull C. C, H, and L from. Edson. H and L. So Anthony has a motion to pull C, H, and L, noting that we have already pulled from L independently eight, fifteen, and sixteen. Anthony's motion will require a second to move forward. Is there a second to pull those items?
With all due respect, Mr. President, I, uh, any member of the public or any.
You're a great member. Those items are now pulled. Correct. Any, any, any boardroom can pull these out.
So we need to say this?
No, we don't. So we will keep voting on the consent items minus those items, which again, Anthony, you have C, H, L? C, H, L, yes, sir.
We do have to speak your part on those.
On C, H, and L? We do, but we're, we're pulling them, so we're going to vote on them separately. So we'll, we'll discuss C, H, and L and each member of the public who's pulled it hard will have the opportunity to speak on them when they come up.
No, Anthony, no. And, and C, H, and L are the only ones that there's public comment on?
It's almost as if it was organized. Okay, that's not a lie. All right, so we are voting on consent.
I'd like to motion that we approve the consent agenda minus C, H, L.
Perfect, second. Second by Anthony. Please vote. Pass is five O. There's a little bit of a heads up during the nature of our meeting this evening. We're, we're done with this particular item. I'm going to take a five, ten minute break. Everybody get up, move their feet, use the restroom, go, just connect through, get up, snap bill. Then we'll come back and we'll finish up the agenda if that sounds good for everybody. All right. That way we're not trying to wait till the end and, and then trying to sneak out to use the restroom. Um, with that said and done, could you have to speak your cards? Can we please have a nine C specifically? Can we please have a nine C specifically? Uh, we'll take this one at a time. All right, Mary, you've been having cleanup, why don't you lead off this go around and then Rosella, you'll follow over for this. So this topic again, for those not, hold on one second on the clock. Is the recommendation the governing board approved in December twelve, twenty twenty-three as the annual organizational meeting? All right, Mary, get your convenience from the clock, start your.
Hi, Mary Davis, and I will be brief, out of respect for everybody's time. I just want to say that when it comes to your organizational meetings, and I am recommending, um, that you add some places, uh, subcommittees on there. One would be an audit and finance subcommittee. One would be a policy and governance subcommittee. And number three is something should, should be the heart of this district, parental rights subcommittee as an overarching umbrella for everything that you do. And so I'm asking that you move that forward. Thank you for pulling this item.
Just to make sure, Karen, did you get all those down? Okay, wonderful.
I, I didn't refresh it. It was orchestrated. What great minds think alike.
Radio.
So I will bring up on your organizational meeting, I would like to see you bring back from the comment to the beginning of the board meeting, um, pre-COVID is, it's gone, it's passed. I think it's important that you hear public comment, um, before you start. How many discussions on any of the agenda items are just a free for all? I think it'd be nice to hear from the public. Um, so I think they will consider that in your organizational meeting. Um, and again, she brought up the subcommittees. I don't know what happened to the subcommittees. I don't know boards that don't have subcommittees, that's where all of our work is done. That's where you send your board bylaws and your policies and your protocols and your procedures and your handbooks. And that's where you work on that, is in your, in your committees. So a refresh, audit and finance subcommittee, let's put a board member's eyes on that, on those finances and the audit with Scott. I think that's important. You rotate it, you learn about your financials, and when you have a, when you have a summit, you have a budget. By all means, that should come to the board, it's a whole different game and where that money is coming from. And then I think you should have the, oh, now that you're going to consider your master's facility plan, um, we had a gross amount of board bond subcommittee, I think that's important. When you start trying to tweak out, um, what's, uh, what your priorities are gonna be and what you're going to face. And then the governance policy, your wellness, I think, is a great one that you have on there. And then I think you need a curriculum steering committee, and I think that would help augment the, the parental advisory committee when you're talking about curriculums and some of the materials that are brought into the campus and schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we're, we're being on, is an agenda as items and we're being open to board discussions, are you ready?
I just want to make a comment on the reason why we moved public comment is because usually in the beginning of our board meetings, we'd have children here. And a lot of times, it was really difficult for some of the things that were going on. That is the original reason why we moved it, to be conscientious of parents and our children.
Do you think that reason still exists?
Sometimes. Because sometimes we'll have a board and those kinds of things. So it's, it's circumstantial. So that's, I just wanted to make that comment of why we did it in the first place.
And I think it's important for the public who wants to make a comment and then, then on now, which I don't blame anybody for doing, but I also want the public to understand what the work of a board and our ground is. And the only way that they're gonna do that is if they see what we do. Um, so I think it's a twofold situation. Um, they should know when we got students up here receiving awards, I think that would be important for them to see. Um, so they, they see these kids, what they're doing and the diversity of, of our, of our district. Just to add my two cents to that particular topic. While I do like some of the ideas on subcommittees, no, great comments.
Um, I agree with the ideas on, on the subcommittees. And I went back and looked at a agenda from twenty eighteen and quoted from memory. I think it had moment of silence, um, gifts and donations, retirements. And, um, I would assume maybe student presentations, whenever they were like a lot of that particular agenda had one. And then, and then pretty much right after that, like the president's announcement, moment of silence awards, recognition, blah, blah, blah. Um, there was public comment, which I know every other, you know, every agenda item, whether closed session or open session, we're supposed to hear public comment first before we can deliberate. Um, so then on that, in that sense, putting it at the front, but after moments of silence, award recognition, student presentations, uh, putting public comment up there before the board really gets to work, so the board can hear from, from the public on some things, uh, like the board to, to consider.
I, I definitely, um, like the ideas of the organizational meeting, um, and the, a little more detailed. I think, um, I, what we're voting on here, which I appreciate the feedback, but is doing the actual organizational meeting. So do we need to, um, vote on more subcommittees tonight to add to next meeting? Or do we then deliberate and make that, um, something for next meeting?
Perhaps if someone could move that to, if someone would agree with the comments that were made tonight, they can mention that in their, um, let's see, discuss further agenda items, item number twelve.
Can I second what Jim said about the ideas on the subcommittees? So I don't know, maybe it's appropriate just for staff in the minutes to list, list those ones mentioned and then the board can have that discussion in our organizational.
That's what the meeting is for, while you're voting on right now is the date.
I would say.
Yeah, that's what I, I was trying to clarify.
With all the news in the world.
Well, we'll vote on that and we'll add to that, which I think this conversation is really great. These acts are really great, so that we know that when we get to an organizational meeting, we know how to proceed and, and what we, what we're going to do, so.
And it sounds like no way you disagree from December twelve. Is it the actual?
Can I, can I make a motion to accept our organizational meetings?
Motion by Karen, three oh seven.
Second.
Second by Joe. Uh, we'll do this as a verbal vote, as we already got to it. So all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any ayes. Go ahead, it's kind of a pass is five O. Uh, bouncing down to nine H, do you have some additional speaker comments on this one? So, uh, Lee, uh, if you will please come up and Mary, you'll, you'll follow me, we're, Mary's second. Generally no, but we're happy to take them afterwards. We can, there's a chair there, isn't there?
They'll pull up, they'll just pull up, sorry, I don't normally pull this, oh, they're recording.
I think David moved the chair to the side, so if you want to sit down, Lee, chair.
I'm happy to stand.
All right, please go ahead and if there's three seconds, I can.
Okay, well, this, this was about the travel trip, um, to Las Vegas. Get your teach on, get your lead on, and I looked it up and I thought, wow, this doesn't look like Oklahoma Valley at all. The things that, um, Naomi O'Brien and.
Oh, the other, the other woman that offered.
Anyhow, I, I took the time to highlight these, but I don't really feel like this is at all what you guys are wanting to teach here. To be inclusive, you're wanting to build relationships in Oklahoma Valley. And I don't feel like this is gonna do that at all. Waste of money, it's like twenty-five thousand dollars. And I think when you take the time to look through this, and see what I mean, it, it doesn't look like it's useful at all for the kids. It's like, it's just really kind of a pep rally, but not really. But these, these two women that are educators are saying that they want, um, social justice oriented education. And, um, they're wanting to instill this message in other educators and children.
No.
Um, yeah, there was, it was, the more I read, the worse it got. Um, I talked about, uh, holidays, they don't really like that we celebrate George Washington, President's Day. And, um, they want to promote critical thinking, um, which I, I mean, no, we want people, the kids eventually to be critical thinkers, right? But you need them to at least to respect authority, respect boundaries and that sort of thing. And not, not to start questioning authority when you're in kindergarten, I don't think that's a good idea. I think you need to think for yourself by the time you get to high school, but I think when you're young, K through eight, you need that, you need to feel safe in your school, you need to be able to learn. But not all this, this garbage is stuff that, it might be appropriate, maybe in college or high school, but it's not appropriate. It's not, it wouldn't be for me, I wouldn't go to school like that, however. This is the, the public school, I, I think that, um, I think parents are gonna be excited about this, but I don't think a lot of the teachers will either. And I, I know I personally have friends that teach in this district and some of the stuff that's come through that has been way far out left, they don't teach it. They don't like the way that this district is being run right now at all. And it's, I mean, I think to really look at these things critically, you guys, that are on the board. This is not a good, get your teach on, I mean, just look at the photos on it, look at their message. It's not good and it's not where this district should be going. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Mary Davis here. So I too have concerns, again, going back to transparency, uh, with your travel details. You continually fail to provide itemized receipts or documentation, I am asking that to change. Um, I also feel that all of the training, when you send, it should offer links to what kind of programs. I don't think it's up to me as a taxpayer to have to go and dig and Google the, these organizations. I shouldn't have started this off by saying, A, your teachers are amazing. They deserve sematicals, getaways, training, to keep them top of the art and to give them a little ad boy and, and, and they should be treated well. That said, there needs to also be equal respect for the parents and for parental rights and having us know what, um, is going to be in the curriculum taught to the teacher. Because what I see a lot of times is, uh, especially when I Google today, a lot of this looks like it's kind of a backdoor to implementing it into curriculum, circumventing, circumventing any type of parental review in the process. Um, and for example, some of the problematic things, I looked at this, read like a rock star teaching, um, and with a blog post here that said, uh, white families guide who are talking about racism. It would be wonderful to be able to simply ignore ignorant and racist people, but these people and the children they are raising are killing us. That does not sound very inclusive or tolerant. And if you substituted any other race for white, you would be a bigot and possibly upon hate allegations. So to me, equality has to work both ways. And it does nobody good from a mental health crisis to start making one race start feeling like they are responsible for the weight of the world. These kids are innocent, I, I have a saying, say little eye before the big eye. And what that means is individual before ideology. If we would go back simply to the golden rule and start treating everybody with kindness and dignity, quit weaponizing diversity to the point where you were trying to, people are trying to erase faith and get us to be against each other. Have kids work together. I lost a good another one of their posts where they said, uh, Target had the opportunity to show up as a power for ally. They portrayed themselves when their allyship was tested by transphobes and homophobes. Anybody that has an ideological difference, whether for religion or a faith-based system, including Muslims, uh, that doesn't make them phobic, that makes them wanting to protect their children with their values. They should be respected for that, not named, uh, labels by somebody who this training is going to accuse other people of being phobic. Um, so again, inclusivity has to work both ways. And I urge your teachers to be trained, uh, that celebrates all students and belief systems. Thank you.
Questions by the board?
Um, I just need to know a little background as to how this conference in particular was chosen. Um, perhaps by whom and why and, let's just start there.
I can provide some context. This was, uh, came from sites last year or the year before, I think. We've had schools that have gone, this would be their second year or some of their third year. And it really was the motivational aspects of the conference, they shared what the topics are. Um, one thing that would be interesting, when we have presenters, whether it's at the county, anywhere you go, um, some of the information that's being shared and, um, comment, if that's attached indirectly on what is happening at that conference, that's really important. If it's someone's personal page, their Instagram, their personal beliefs, as a district, I need to know what's the conference and that's our purview. What someone's belief system is personally, I need to know the difference between the two. What's being presented is important that that is transparent. Um, we did have some questions from the board about what are the, can we get the slide decks? Can we see that, can we record? Can we, uh, see the information? The answer was no, and many times when we ask anyone in any professional learning, the answer's gonna be no, because it's someone's content, it's their personal content and intellectual property. So I know that will often be a no. Um, this conference, I think you need to think about all conferences and people in education between their personal beliefs and what they post and what they should be doing and that we are paying for when people go. There is some difference between the two. And the, what you put out as a presenter, what you put out as a conference supporter, the content was pretty detailed. Um, we've had several schools go to these things, teachers and leaders, it was very positive, it was very motivational. Um, there's been some discussion about this is going to come in front of my children in some way, and I understand that. We need to, if something's going to come in front of your children, that is curriculum, those are curricular, those are resources. Every conference we go to does not automatically imply that a material is going to change in a classroom. Um, Anthony and I had a discussion about a process. If you are looking to change something in a classroom based on going to a professional learning, perhaps we set up a system to discuss that, um, in some form of, uh, central leadership. But the assumption that someone goes and they're going to automatically do X, Y, or Z, I can't answer that. Um, but that's a lot of information at once, but that is the history of this conference. Was site staff, site leadership.
So in light of not trying to corner anyone on the cabinet or surprise anybody, the comments that were brought to the board tonight are concerning in, in a lot of ways. And when I went to, so for example, when the speakers came up to share their opinions on the conference in that time, I, I did go to both of the websites, get your teach on and also get your lead on. And I didn't find any, uh, material that would speak to what the conference is, but, you know, what their content is in the conference, but, so just looking at the website firsthand, I didn't see that. But I don't know where this came from.
That's, uh, from Get Your Teach On.
But I don't see that in the website, so where did, how did you get this?
That's in their, that's on their blog.
Oh, on their blog, okay.
The blog page there at Get Your Teach On, you'll find that article.
Okay, so.
You're saying you don't have time to read that? Give, give you your time to find this, if the change is long, probably. I'm teasing you, go ahead.
Just based on the content, because we have to be considerate of the type of content that if, if we're, if we as, if we're using taxpayer money to, look at that, to, um, enhance teacher and administrative learning, we should be mindful of the content of what we're actually spending that money on, right? So if the content is, leans one way or another, we have to consider, is this profitable for our district and, and what they're learning? So I need to be, I need to know what exactly they're learning there. You know, this is a blog that was presented to me right now, their concerns from the community. What are they learning at, at this conference? Is there any content that they, I can say, okay, I'm gonna go ahead and register for this conference, which is how, you know, typically, this is how it goes, I register for the conference and then once, you know, even before I register, I should be able to kind of peruse the website to see what kind of breakout sessions there are, what kind of keynotes that are going to be presented at the event. And I don't see that here.
I have a few, yeah, a few comments. So one, I'll be speaking on a panel. So one, I'll be speaking on a panel next month at the California School Board Association, talking about our safety committee and what we're trying to do creatively to, you know, increase or improve the student behavior of our students systematically. On that agenda at the California School Board Association, page by page, if you click the topics and titles, there are things that would be like, are you kidding me? In the same way that these are, and these are school board members that are the speakers at this conference. That's going to be the case at any place we go. Um, I've never been to these, uh, to Get Your Lead On, Get Your Teach On, but several have gone in years past, and those that have come back have been inspired and recharged and talked about it positively so much that looking at Jake Lautner, Tim Petraglia, Joy Delgalego, LaSta Esa, Sarah, Sarah Wright, and then the avocado team, if they want to go, I would ask the board, please approve this. They're excited about it. They will go and they will be inspired. They'll collaborate and they'll come back charged. And they'll bring ideas and they'll use their discretion. And these are people who I trust their judgment to go to the right places to find the inspiration they need. And I think it'll be a good use of district funds.
So in other words, what you're saying is, um, there are a lot of different things that could be presented at a conference of this nature. There could be, you know, on a spectrum, a lot of things that may be, uh, let's just say conservative oriented all the way to something that's not exactly conservative oriented. And it's not to our discretion to make teachers or administrator, uh, administrators to choose what type of breakout session they want to go to. Um, but I don't see on this website that spectrum. I don't see a spectrum, I don't see a spectrum of what the choices could be. So I'm, I would like to see at least just to kind of peruse what kind of, um, you know, um, um, what kind of education are they getting? That's all. That's all I want to know.
Well, this, I'm wondering, um, can I ask if there are teachers in the audience that have actually attended this before?
It's primarily administrators.
Administrators or teachers?
It's teachers.
Teachers and teachers. Nobody?
Didn't, didn't, didn't you speak on the class?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think there was teachers that spoke on that. And this was, and I believe Sarah, right? Yeah, talked about how amazing it was, and it was just such a great time for the team to collaborate and come together. And, um, then I think, I mean, we can even ask, a couple of asks on our staff is to bring back really their, what they, what they learned. What do we want them to bring back to us?
Yes.
And I, I think that's important. Um, because part of it too is also if we send our, our staff out there, we then know firsthand what's going out there, you know? Um, so submitting back to us their flyers or their things that we, we don't see because it's at the actual event. So, um, but I also was looking on here and they have like a one-day experience. So you can actually have the, Get Your Teach On or Get Your Lead On, get Your Teach On especially, come to our district, you know, and we can then control it. So there's, there's options. I do hear, you know, both sides, the concerns. But I think we have adults that really want to make good decisions for our students. And, and we get to set the precedent on, on how they implement it. I think having, uh, something where they can come back and, and if they want to implement something that presented to us as the board, it's just like, oh, please do it.
I, I agree with Joe's concern that, um, I've spent a lot of time researching this group and I've included in the handout I gave you guys, not just that, but the other handout. Um, many of, many of the things from the keynote speakers. I think the distinction to draw between, uh, what David said about the CSBA conference with these school board members made their, you know, activist radicals. The, the distinction is the California School Board Association has been sending, uh, district staff back with curriculum to put in the classroom. Um, when you get to Get Your Teach On, they separate you based on what grade you teach. Um, their stated goal is creating magic in the classrooms. The, um, reviews, which I've included in this packet from people who go say, you know, before I heard from Naomi, Read Like a Rockstar Teaching is one of the keynotes, um, I didn't think it was appropriate to have these conversations with first graders about race and gender. And now I know. There's a link on page twenty-three, uh, from Get Your Teach On. This is from Get Your Teach On. On page twenty-three of the handout, uh, for welcomingschools.org/resources/licenseplans. That's from HRC, which I know you guys have heard about HRC from me many times from the bowling alley experience. They're a radical activist group. They recruit twenty-eight starts from the US flag. They call it the Reality Flag. They have curriculum they send teachers with for K through fourth grade to create gender expansive classrooms. Um, the, the blog I sent you, like tips for being an ally when your job is on the line, that, uh, that handout I gave you. Turn a few pages back, you'll see, uh, pictures of girls who can't be more than two years old, um, holding up books and watching videos that are not very age appropriate. Um, in, in addition to that, this, this keynote speaker, Read Like a Rockstar Reading, she, she has a packet, this is page twenty-two, uh, Pyramid of White Supremacy. And at the bottom, it starts out with indifference. Um, and indifference is, is the example she gives, uh, let's keep politics out of it, saying both sides. Um, denying, is talking about color, claiming to be colorblind. That's the minimization. So as you get up to the pyramid of actual mass murder, lynching, police brutality, and hate crimes, these are the things that, that she's laying out the argument, create that. She's the same, uh, person who said, you know, silence might be acceptable if it weren't for the fact that these people and the children they are raising are killing us. This is what, so that you're, they're going to this conference being separated out by the grade they teach and being given curriculum, uh, teacher training obviously, books, resources, including HRC resources, so that they can go back and create magic in their classrooms. So I think that's really the, the key difference here is when we send district staff. We send our superintendent to a CSBA conference and he hears some talk on why we should be Marxist instead of capitalist, like, that's a TEDx talk by the way, but anyway, getting off topic. Um, he's not being handed, HRC's, uh, um, creating a gender expansive classroom for first graders curriculum, where these reviews from these teachers from, from this conference say, I learned that I can really get into these topics with first graders. So, and, and our district is not a stranger to, uh, you know, having the experience where we probably inadvertently, uh, had activist training of our staff and then translated into posters that violate our advertising and promotional material policies that were student-facing. And then, you know, we had to walk that back last month. And, and at the end, at the beginning of all that was the training that our district did of our staff that said, hang these posters up. Here's your safe space kit. Make sure you put it up there. This, to me, is like Dave Chappelle all over again, where we're setting our teachers up to potentially go there and in good faith, learn these things and say, oh, I'm creating magic in my classroom. I want to do this. Um, and I think it's important to mention too right now that if we want to do Oregon Gillingham and put them in a five-star hotel with, uh, five-star meal and a retreat and massage if the government allows us to do that, I think the teachers more than deserve that. Um, but this, it, it sounds clear like Joe said, what exactly they're learning. But it, the only thing that is clear is that they are learning and coming home with curriculum books and, and materials to share with the students of this district, at which point I think triggers the requirement that, like Joe asked them, we, we should have, we should be able to see what they're learning. If you send them to Oregon Gillingham, you know, they're going to learn how to teach kids how to read.
So just during the time you were just, um, commenting, Anthony, I went into the website again and did quick researches on just other, you know, I'm, I'm trying to find the spectrum in good faith. We've heard all about the things that Cajon Valley may not be agreeable to. But in good faith, I wanted to know if there were any other types of sessions that were available to our teachers. And we're looking at the teachers and our staff that are going. We're looking at Shereen Wall, Jacob Lautner, Jennifer Petraglia, Jordan Dunk, Guy Gallego, Kenresi Ralston. So we're looking at these, especially our educators that I know as a board member here. I can speak for myself that these are very trusted educators. These are educators that have, um, heard our initiative, followed what we've asked of them despite on how they felt personally, and carried that out. Okay, so let's just establish that for the educators that are on this specific list. These are not educators that I do not know. These are educators that I know, I would say on a personal level, many of them have my phone number. I call them. I, and I think they understand and trust where I stand on the board, and they can respect our initiative. Let's start there. So then I go to this website. There are that type of content that, that Anthony's mentioned. But let's talk about the Wild Card Kid. So this is also, um, it looks like these people are very, um, reputable, um, trying to help. Five, so basically they wrote a story called The Wild Card Kids: A Journey to Magic. This, this is a husband and wife couple who wrote a book about five kids who find a mysterious deck of cards and are plunged into a strange new world. Maverick Piper and Zion, Zach and Skye must now find their way back home. So it's, it sounds like it's kind of an adventure-type story. Another one is Allison Apse. So Allison Apse is a twenty-plus-year award-winning educator, TEDx speaker. TEDx speaker is something that we also incorporate here as our, uh, presentation literacy. So our educators are familiar with that. Um, a word from Allison, making a difference is one of my core values and pouring into educators so that they can do their best work for students is my favorite way to make a positive impact. So it's not all just, I, I want to point out that yes, these topics that Anthony presented are there. They're definitely a part of the curriculum that's going to be presented at this conference. But let's not just make it all that. There are other things that I'm seeing that are also being presented at this, at this event as well.
I mean, boys to men.
Boys to men, Elaine.
I mean, are we looking at our educators that work in Cajon Valley and saying, oh, they're all going to pick these? Or are they going to say no? Are we going to be able to trust our educators to go and pick wholesome curriculum topics that are going to enhance the work that we do here at Cajon Valley? Or are they going to pick topics that they know goes incredibly against the values of this board? I don't think so.
I think if we knew what the topics.
I, I can't, I can't, I can, I mean, I'm looking at the topics in general. My question was, what are they going to be learning? I did the due diligence to dig a little deeper to find out exactly what they're, what they have in front of them. I don't see any benefit of why these educators that are mentioned in this, uh, that are traveling, the attendees, very trusted people, Mike Houfal, who was in my Christian fraternity back in San Diego State, who bear. You know, I'm talking about these people that I know personally. They're not going to go down that road.
No, I don't think, I, I don't have the concern that our staff would do that. I, I have the concern that this board and this administration would send teachers to training that is steeped in this. So I'll read one instructional resource guide from grades six through eight. It talks about two students, middle school students, maybe. They never meet in person, so, uh, let's say a middle school student starts an online relationship. Um, the discussion questions for these kids, this is welcomingschools from HRC.org. One of the questions, what makes an online friendship easier? So this is extremely, this, this whole conference is steeped in this extremely radical stuff. It's not, I trust that, um, ninety-nine point ninety-nine percent of district staff will be able to separate the wheat from the chaff, but there's a lot of, which, which is worse, the chaff or the wheat? There's, whatever one's, I think the wheat. There's a lot of wheat and not much chaff. There's actually no chaff. They won't tell us.
Chaff is the bad.
Chaff's the bad? Okay, okay. So there's a lot of chaff and, and they won't show us any wheat, really. We said, what, what, you know, again, we send them to Oregon Gillingham, we know what they're getting. We send them here, I mean, they're being taught to, you know, start conversations with first graders. Now, do I think our Cajon Valley staff in our culture would know that, you know, even if this really inspirational keynote speaker is inspiring you to do that, that you shouldn't actually do that? Uh, yeah, I, I, I agree with Joe that, you know, that the odds of some adult from this district would go there and say, oh yeah, I need to start having conversations with first graders about race and gender identity. Um, but that is the training that this district will be sending them to. That's what we're spending plenty of.
So just, just to counter that, there's also research support. This is another opportunity, research supports that we, when students are engaged, motivated, immersed in and experience their ability to retain information increasingly. Our team of Get Your Teach On engagement makers will fully transform a traditional learning space into their very own engagement lab that will bring lessons to life and interactive environments with endless possibilities. So this is again, another aspect of what they're learning. Um, and I agree with you, Anthony, that I don't believe our educators would choose things that would be sub below our, um, our expectations.
I think what you just read perfectly illustrates the point of this conference of that it is to create something in the classroom with students. So you have staff-student interaction there, and you have parents who would like to be able to review teacher training, instructional materials, especially as they relate to curriculum that's going to be delivered in the classroom. And in that, in that framework, this conference telling us that, you know, you can't see it, it's proprietary, but we're going to send the teachers back home with, with curriculum. Well, I think we should know as board before we send teachers to the training, what are they being trained on, what curriculum's coming back, what books, teacher training materials. But this group has said no, which means as a public school district at this point, we can't be responsive to what I think is a fundamental, uh, requirement of us that if a parent wanted to know, you know, how are the teachers being trained to instruct my child in, in school? Um, they're telling us, no, you can't see that. It's a secret. And I, I can imagine why. I mean, people don't, this is another one from Read Like a Rockstar Teaching. People don't get killed because they're LGBTQ. They get killed because of homophobic and transphobic people.
I'm not exactly sure where you're saying that they're hiding it.
Mr. President, may I have your brief?
Yeah, then we're going to do two things. I'm going to ask Brian, as the administrator's rep, if you'd like to comment, since most of the people going are administrators and Steve, if you'd like to comment from a teacher's perspective, like you have both your comments on the record, if you so choose to, Martine. There you go.
So I'm not advocating for the conference. I haven't found down rabbit holes on each of the speakers or the keynotes. And my analogy with the CSBA conference was obviously misunderstood. So I'll use a different, direct experience. Two principals, Joliana's the principal, I'm an elementary principal in two thousand and five. We both get money to send our staff on professional learning because of the No Child Left Behind grant, the Professional Development Dollars. One principal said, you can go to these three things and then micromanage the process. Teachers didn't have any discretion. Another principal said, you know what, why don't you guys research and if there's some, I think, outside-the-box ideas, you know, go for it. The teachers that were able to use their discretion and choose and go on something and come back and present their findings were on fire that year. The other teachers didn't even want to go because they weren't trusted. And so what we're doing here is regardless of the content, we're saying, we don't trust you to use your discretion to achieve these goals with the funds that you have in your own budgets.
Who's saying that?
That's, that's what we're doing here in this conversation, micromanaging.
Who is saying that?
That's what we are saying.
Who is saying that?
You and I.
Well, hold on, to, to, hold on, to interpret, Anthony. To interpret, you know, what you're saying is that generally speaking, that the content of the conference, based upon the originator of the conference.
This superintendent made a statement to me. I know you're board president.
And I'm going to take a break out of everything.
And I'm going to, and I think you elaborate.
No. The concept is that based upon the conference content, based upon the conference sponsor, that you believe is very clear that the attendees from Cajon Valley will be incapable of, of, now right now.
This friend, this friend that's saying, why did I say that they do think that?
Everything you said plus your opinion.
Okay, so not a single, not a single quote. Good job, Jim. You're, you're, you're going to characterize my attention. You're not a mind reader, Jim. You may be an attorney that hits five hundred dollars an hour, but you're not a mind reader.
That's why I did this. But I, I apologize. The fact of the matter is, Anthony, I understand where you're coming from. I don't just.
We don't understand, Jim.
I do. You need to relax just a moment so we can finish, so I can finish this.
Don't understand.
It allows you to pontificate for quite some time on this topic. David's made a comment. Now I'd like to have Brian, if you'd like to come forward and make a comment about.
I would like to ask the superintendent to finish his comment that he made to me, Mr. Board President. I think that's right here for class.
No, Brian, come on up.
You're a valiant defender of the superintendent's.
I'm trying to get the opinions of everybody in the room, inclusive of the president, CVA. Please have a fun.
What I can say, I have not been to Get Your Lead On, Get Your Teach On, the conference. I have been a sent staff. We sent several teachers last year. Came back with amazing strategies around the world of, or the areas of literacy, STEM activities. I didn't see any curriculum coming back. It was strategies around teaching, best practices, research-based, best practices, inspirational keynotes that inspire teaching and good teaching, but nothing, nothing less. So those are the comments I have on it. Like I said, I haven't, I haven't been to the conference myself. I think there is, I think it's really important that echoing the comments by a few of our board members that we do exercise the ability for our educators in the district and our administrators in the district to make professional judgment when they're attending any kind of professional learning. That's whether it's online, at home, when you're on a webinar, or when you travel to a conference, it's out of state, you're making professional judgments. You're trying to align and promote the practices of our district in that professional learning. So that's my viewpoint on it. I didn't prepare anything. I didn't know it was gonna be called short of my association report that may, may or may not come before 10 o'clock tonight. I appreciate you asking for all of this.
Thank Brian for that. I'm just wanting to, superintended, I'm not particular to a topic, bringing people up when they're not ready to speak. Steve, if you're, if you're convenient, please.
Thank you. I had a bunch of teachers that wanted to come and speak on this. But because you guys have one meeting a month, and it goes until midnight, none of those teachers wanna be here. They have a job to do in the morning. So that's why you have nobody speaking right. As far as this program, I agree with David and Joe. You need to give the respect to all the educators. No curriculum is gonna be taught in a classroom without approval from you guys. We do state mandated curriculum. Anything else comes from you guys. When I go to a conference, I'm not doing exactly what they say. I get one or two points, and I come back and I put those points into play, how my teaching is and how what the kids need, and that's how I do it. And that's how all educators do it. They don't take word for word. We are educators, and we know how to move different ways of teaching students. But you're saying, right now, as a group, by taking this away, how wonderful that these people speak of it. They are gonna go with what's best for the kids and what's best for the district. And if you guys don't trust in them, then you're gonna say, let's not do this. And right now, you as a board have put your foot down for all the educators in this district that you do not trust or respect their decisions. Now, just like Anthony was saying, there's some speakers that are not appropriate. You know how many conferences I go to that I go, oh, hell no, I'm not gonna go to that one. There's no way. I'm not, no. That's not what my kids need. Because I know what my students need. And that's what I'm gonna go to. But right now, I'm very disappointed because you're not trusting in these educators. So if you want my personal opinion, I, I'm, I'm actually embarrassed right now if you take this away from them. Because you're saying that none of the educators in Cajon Valley are smart enough to take what they need and throw away. So that's all I am saying.
Thank you, Steve. So, so as President Brian, I, I try to keep my comments to the end. And I look at this in a hell of different ways. One, you know, I didn't go to CSBA last year.
Is this the end because don't we get more discussion after these people have come up and spoken? Staff members? Don't the board deliberate further?
We're, we're moving on. I don't, I don't think, I don't think positions change, Anthony.
Well, yeah, there's new information. So the superintendent, the, the union president is framing this as, the board, the board's being asked, this is the action item, by the way. The board's being asked to, it requires board approval, the traveling conference.
Correct.
A yes or a no vote from this board does not pass a judgment on all the intelligence level or the trust level of the staff in this district. If you wanna, I don't know, sending teachers to Get Your Teach On, I, I just got through saying, we could, let's send them to Oregon Dillingham, put them up in a five-star hotel with an awesome dinner. This group, and this is not unilaterally controlled by district staff. This deals with staff-student interaction, this deals with curriculum. I know we've had two administrators come up here and say that, I'm not aware that they came back with any curriculum. It's linked directly on the page that they're gonna come back with, with this curriculum. At that point, you're in the domain of parent notification, parent review, parent involvement, board review, board involvement on curriculum, as you said correctly, Steve. Get Your Teach On is being completely not transparent on that. They're saying we can't see any of it before we vote. We vote to approve whether approved or not approved. And a yes or no vote, despite how the superintendent attempted to characterize it with absolutely no backup or quotes, like he often does, is, a yes or no vote is.
An inappropriate comment, Anthony, please give us your self next time.
That's an appropriate comment. You interrupted him and defended him well, Jim, but he made a comment about what I said.
All I did, all I did was state your position and move forward.
He didn't state my position.
I'd say exactly what your position is.
Okay, well, we'll go back and watch the video. And I'm sure that, you know, the public who's here can, can be the judge of that. Anyway, despite the attempt to characterize that we don't want an activist organization, once again, we, our district set our teachers up for failure with the Listen Sage Face Kids and that training that went on. We just went through that. And now, we're gonna walk headlong into it again. This is a board decision. I'm gonna vote no. I don't think this is appropriate at all for the parents or students of this district. The teachers, like I said, happy to send them on training, five-star accommodations. This training wants, if they choose it, Karen, and it deals with staff-student interaction and curriculum for first graders, then parents in the community get a say as well, and so does the board. So.
Well, what I'm reading here says, Get Your Teach On Leadership and Content Development Team has worked to create an engaging and transformational educator professional development experience that aligns directly within the needs of schools and teachers across the country by helping educators develop consistent and best instructional practices and processes from start to finish to accelerate student learning. These evidences and research-based practices, strategies, and techniques will directly impact the overall educator's effectiveness and student achievement and transform instruction and student learning as ever before.
Transform instruction, students, all of that triggers board oversight, parent oversight. And.
I agree that like that they're gonna transform teaching. They're transforming their classrooms because sometimes a classroom is really difficult to handle. There is a lot of nuances that are in a classroom that are very difficult when you have all kinds of students coming from all different places. So if you have some opportunities to learn, here's the planning and preparation, learning, the learning environment, the instruct, best instructional practices, student accountability and engagement, helping them to be responsible and, and, like we have talked about earlier, to be thinkers, right? And the data and process monitoring, teacher effectiveness. There are so many opportunities. And, and I think we, again, we had teachers that came back, or even principals that came back from, you have your, your Teach On or whatever it was this summer.
Your, your lead on.
Was it Get Your Lead On?
Get Your Teach On or Lead On.
It was the summer key hall on that they did, and so.
Also, can I just, I'm sorry, I interrupted. Just a little bit more content as far as, you know, moving forward, hopefully soon on this, on this issue. Why Get Your Teach On, Get Your Teach On Leadership and Content Development Team has worked to create engaging and transformational education, professional development that aligns directly to the needs of the schools and teachers across the country. So I, I can't read what you're, what you've written there on that, Chrissy. So again, this is, you know, we've talked about the concept of trusting our educators to making the decisions about what they're going to pick as far as their conference content. I would move for this, in my opinion, I would vote for this.
I'll be voting no, because you guys perfectly laid out in reading all of that that this very much has to do with student learning.
Roblont in November.
That's, so, yeah, I'll vote no. And to try and frame it as a vote of confidence or a vote of trust or a vote of the intelligence of teachers, it doesn't track at all. This is, the board's being asked to approve this traveling conference. It's very, very connected to student learning, which comes under the purview of the board and the parents of the community. We've heard from them as well. If you wanna send teachers on that same date and time to a great conference on literacy or anything else, like, it, it's really not about, it's not, if this vote is not about a vote of confidence or trust for the teachers, as it's been mischaracterized. So I, I will be voting no, based on many of the good observations that Joe made about the lack of transparency of what exactly we're sending the teachers to learn here. Other than we know we are sending them to learn how to interact with other people's children within our school sites. We know that for sure. And we know what, some of what they teach. These people and the children they raise are killing us, for example, so. That's keynote speaker, so. Vote your conscience, of course. I'll let the, all your time. Yes.
All right, so. Nothing new there, anything, by the way. You, you resented yourself about five times.
That's fine.
So, no, it's not fine, because it kills time for everybody.
We could read, we could read Roberts' rolls of the dice.
As we move forward, as we move forward, President, I try to keep my comments at the end. So, one, I've been to plenty of conferences where I certainly do not agree with the content of the conference. Same point in time, and that's from legal to education to whatnot. I mean, Mary and I sat, listened to Rob Monta and Tara Lawson-Reimer and every anti-gun and anti-second amendment person you possibly imagine in the county board supervisor's office for about four hours. And I don't think Mary nor I walked out of there any more pro-second amendment than where we walked in. But we've heard the other side. What have I said before, several times? The other, the opportunity to understand both sides of an issue is important. The conversation is important. The mashing up of ideas is messy, but important. The educators on this list, as with Joe, I know many of them and have worked with them, and I trust their judgment to, as Anthony said, separate the wheat from the chaff. I do not believe that the educators that I know on that list are coming back here, you know, doing anything whacked out far left. What is the definition of professional development or continuing education in my, my particular profession?
I think they train literacy.
All right. The, the audience has been given enough leeway on interaction. It's about to end if we cannot maintain it. So, that said and done, the importance of this vote is above. I clearly am not aligned with the organization or the speakers of this organization that's gonna be conducting the conference. I am not, not even close. But this is not my extent. The conference that I would choose, this is not. I wouldn't go this way. The teachers and the administrators would like to go. The review by those who have attended have been positive. And again, I in fact trust the teachers, and I do in fact trust the administrators on the issue. So that's our position, at least that's my position, in moving forward. Now, if curriculum comes back, if they want to teach something, then I fully expect that to be discussed with the superintendent's office, to the board of directors, and the board of directors review it and approve it or not. I think it's, the light has been well shined on the issues of backdoor marketing and some will say indoctrination, I will, frankly, say indoctrination through these conferences. That's what's happening here. It's not going to happen here. It better not happen here, right? That's the idea behind this oversight. That's behind, that's the idea behind what we've been doing for at least a good six months of what's been going on. So, while, while four people in this audience aren't gonna like my vote, plus one board member at least, I respect that, because we have purposes of opinion. We agree on concept, we disagree on implementation. Sorry, it's the way it goes, at least from my perspective. And if you can't, I don't expect you to agree with me on implementation. That's fine. But respect that I'm looking from this in a different lens, and I do trust the administrators, I trust the teachers going, although I don't like, or would I agree with, the organization. It's a balance. Stop. One more time. One more, you know what I'm talking to. One more time. So I'm calling for a vote. Do we have motion to approve? That's the first thing that has to have. Do we have motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve by Joe, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Karen. It will be a verbal vote. Those in favor of the traveling conference all say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
No.
No.
Pass is three-two. We now move down to L. We have speaker cards on L. Mary, Tom, Lee, in that order, please.
Thank you, Karen. Hi, Mary Davis. That was a very quick segue, so I wasn't quite ready. Item nine L, consultant agreement expense to join the Economic Development Corporation. I have concerns about this, first with the price, $15,000. It seems pretty steep. And then also, what is the benefit from it? I, I also have concerns about that they want to put Dr. Miyoshiro on their board of directors. And that, to me, begs the question of some type of conflict. I mean, paying to join an organization and then putting your superintendent on their board of directors to oversee you as a member seems inherently just wrong. So I don't know that this is really in the best interest of the students. It seems like it might be in the best interest of the superintendent. Is this a student-centered endeavor or something designed to promote world of work and increase the superintendent's profile and own personal capital? Again, I am urging you to vote no on this. Thank you.
So Mary, to clarify your comment, it's not the entirety of nine L, the other, it is nine, nine L fifteen, correct?
Uh, can I yell? Yes, fifteen, sorry.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. I brought up eight real matters incorporated simply because it was pulled last month and wasn't voted on, and there's no new information for the public. The board may have gotten additional information, but there's no new additional information that I was able to see or, if it's there, I didn't find it. So I hope we would hear some discussion on that. That was item eight, real matters. Item sixteen, briefly, the TEDx rental for Magnolia. I have a third hand, I can confirm that kids who participate in TEDx are being encouraged to bring the problems from their home forward, and that that will be their key to success and advancing through the TEDx, to bring personal problems from their homes forward, rather than things that kids normally talk about, their favorite dog, their favorite hobby, their favorite coach, their favorite sport. Because this is in May, and because Magnolia's not a high-use facility, which is why they had to hire Pride Nation to manage it, there's no risk to the district by delaying this vote for a month and getting another, getting more information. Finally, number fifteen. This is a complete. Finally, number fifteen, uh, this is a completely inappropriate item to sneak into the consent agenda, San Diego Regional Economic Development Council. This is a brand-new, uh, thing, it says it right here, uh, that the district would be the first K through twelve member, and they invited Dr. Mioshiro, as you heard Mary talk about, fifteen thousand dollars to buy in that membership. And the San Diego Economic Regional Development Corporation's mission has nothing to do with kids. It's independently funded somehow, but we have to give them fifteen grand. Economic development organization mobilizes business, government, civic leaders around an inclusive economic development strategy in order to connect data to decision-making, maximize regional prosperity, enhance global competitiveness, and positions San Diego effectively for investment in town. This is your words that you put on here, I didn't have to go find this except to read it from the agenda. It doesn't belong here, and it doesn't belong to Cojon Valley, it has nothing to do with the kids.
Well? Please, your convenience.
About the, uh, renting the Magnolia for twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars for the, looked like the month of May, for the TEDx performances. And to me, that just seems, well, ridiculous, I, I, I feel like what, uh, Mary had said earlier, that literacy and everything needs to come first, and that seems like an awful waste of money. And like Anthony said earlier about chaff and wheat, I feel like wheat are, are the main things, the main building blocks, and learning, reading, reading arithmetic, math, speaking in the TEDx stuff. And, and it also seems to me that, um, wow, that's just a lot of money, but this disappears in other places. And, please consider not doing that, and doing it at the auditoriums or whatever.
That ends the public comment.
We're on L, right?
We are on L, and you pulled all of L, so was there anything else?
Yeah, so from, from L, I would like to vote number eight, number fourteen, number fifteen, number sixteen, number eighteen. Those called eight, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, eighteen. Find the, a motion to vote on the rest.
Is that a motion?
Yes, that's, that's a motion. To vote on everything but eight, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and eighteen.
Alright, do we have a second, Paul?
Second.
Second by Juliana, we'll take a verbal vote on that, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, any days, passes five oh. So now it'll vote independently. Now, we're gonna finish this off. So, but first and foremost, we have speakers on the matter, which was a one of those. Um, Anthony polled eighteen, that had not been discussed previously. All the others are reviewed, have had a comment. Uh, from the board, does anybody else have a comment on eight, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, or eighteen, I reserve until the end?
Comments on all, but wait for other board members, if that's alright, Mr. President?
Anybody else? Juliana, do you have any comments, or is? I'll poll.
Any other topics?
Eight, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, eighteen.
Are we doing, are we doing comment on all at once, or one at a time here?
All at once.
Okay.
Um, comment?
Comments, topics? So, I can give comment, give a? Once we have asked Juliana, it's just, I'm just gonna poll each member.
Just number fourteen, yeah, I, I wrote that down, it's one, like, someone takes a plan to me, and I understand everything fourteen, I did, but I just wanna, um, give me more information.
Excellent, so, uh, David, Dan, or staff, does anybody have any additional comments or information associated with number fourteen, which is the project REST collaborative, who's San Diego County Office of Education? I received additional information on this, I'd asked Karen Minshew, I appreciate her response to me. Um, so, I believe it may have gone out to us in the, in the Friday update as well, but I know that I got it specifically. Karen, would you like to articulate?
Sure, um, Project REST is, um, a program that allows our homeless-identified families five days, um, to put their family up in a hotel. Uh, the county, San Diego County Office of Education, is offering an additional grant, which would give Cojon Valley families that are identified as homeless, uh, up to fifteen days in a hotel. As I looked through the grant, um, there was an identifier on the county flyer at the bottom that said S D Y S, San Diego Youth Services. This has been a controversial topic for the board, so I asked, uh, what, um, the affiliation was, um, because it was on their flyer, and because this is a contract between the county and Cojon Valley to provide ten additional days, or hotel stays. They said the only, they are a funder, that the partnership is strictly funding and providing material items to families, if they need blankets, or clothing, or toiletries, that, that, that financial assistance comes from San Diego Youth Services.
So this is, would be only the services we're gonna get from them, or anything else besides that?
Then they said strictly, the, I said, any other services, I have it in writing, from the county, they said strictly financial and supplies families would need while they're placed, or if they're temporarily staying in a hotel.
Is there another alternative for this fifteen-day hotel voucher, I don't know if that's the right way to term it, um, other than San Diego Youth Services, are there other, um, companies?
I can answer that question, working at the county for the past two years, yes, BCG, and then also the county here, if our office can do that, they provide fifteen days hotel for homeless families, yeah.
So that's, that's a separate program of the San Diego Office of Education?
Yeah, this is the county providing that, every time I send someone, they give them fifteen days, and sometimes they need more, they give them another, like, one week voucher to stay in the hotel, they have kids, even if they're not, like, a single mom, or just one person gets help, they do that.
Is that the same program that Bill Wells, Mayor of Long, had called out because of the issues?
No, no, that one is different, they're paying five hundred a month for fifty-five percent older for two years, yeah, that one is different.
Alright, thank you.
I have an expert on the board here.
Thank you, Karen.
So that, so that program can run in sync with, or, I mean, concurrently with this program, they're not, they're not the same. In other words, if families about, y'all need to be in the program, you mentioned fifteen days, separate and apart from this program, fifteen days, is that, is that your understanding?
Yeah, sure, yeah, I just wanted to lay, also, to, to answer Anthony's question, there is some, the similar program at the county office, parents can go there, but if we're getting, if they're just providing these services, why not? I mean, that is fine, and also helping family through the school or the district, if it's, this is something we can help the parents, I agree, we can work with them.
Is, is the program that you're familiar with, do you know if it's called Project REST, like this one is?
This is the county, different, the, the whole process is different.
What would be the objection to just use all the resources?
I, I would say it's your exclusive, uh, services because, um, it's hard to do that. And because this program isn't just limited to adults and their children, it can also include, um, just students, as, as I read it. Um, and so effectively, we may be in a situation where Cojon Valley is, once again, referring students, um, albeit perhaps inadvertently or indirectly, to San Diego Youth Services.
San Diego Youth Services, or any other organization that is, um, helping to provide this money through Project REST and collaboration with S D C O T, um, able to receive any information on these families?
No, they said, the only thing they're providing is financial support for the stay at the hotel, and personal items that a family may need if they're in a hotel without their necessities. I do want to make a point, um, when we bring things like this to the board, for the staff member that brings this board, we work with the county, um, very closely, all districts do, and when someone said, here's a grant that can add ten days to your families in Cojon Valley that are experiencing homelessness, the staff member, or members that approach this are looking, their intent is to help families and to provide a service and an opportunity. The discussion the board has, I understand and respect, but their staff, with the only intent is to help families, and I want that to be acknowledged.
Well, and I can say, um, you know, I, I ran a one-year treatment center, ran, worked for the San Diego Rest Commission for almost ten years, um, the, and the statistics are the same, there's always ten thousand-plus people on streets homeless every day. That does not include our children, and, um, so, it is really hard to find shelter and housing, and we are getting into the months of where, um, it is getting colder, and, um, and so, it, it's, and I feel like this is a, um, a split-the-baby kind of, um, uh, decision, and so, and, I'm, I'm referring to King Solomon, and so, um, so, that's my question.
I, I wonder how, um, Juliana's experience, how they get people fifteen days in a hotel, motel? Um, and that doesn't seem to be the San Diego Youth Services department. Um, you know, how do you get families fifteen days in a motel without having to send students of this district, uh, potentially, or their families, or importantly, students of the district, through San Diego Youth Services? It seems like this program exists completely separate from San Diego Youth Services, this fifteen-day voucher program. Um, and so that, I would like to remove San Diego Youth Services from that, and, and stick with the fifteen-day voucher program, uh, because it does seem to exist in, in the real world without having to potentially fund students through San Diego Youth Services.
You mean the program that Juliana mentioned?
Yeah, so, Project REST, um, which I, which I researched, it, 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 it exists apart, separate and apart from San Diego Youth Services in certain cases, right? It's because we have youth in our district that the county is involving San Diego Youth Services, because they haven't figured out that they're an issue yet, I assume. It's because we're involving youth, I think, that San Diego Youth Services is, is, has become part, in this context, of the fifteen-day hotel voucher. Fifteen-day hotel vouchers are obviously all over the place. Um, I think what we could say as a district is, look, I understand we have youth, and maybe that triggers San Diego Youth Services involvement in every, in many of the other districts. Um, in our case, thank you for the fifteen-day vouchers, awesome, let's do that, uh, let's keep San Diego Youth Services out of it, like, many of the other fifteen-day voucher, uh, programs that work through the county, they're with the county, right?
Yes.
Okay.
But Anthony, if we're gonna try to keep San Diego, like, always out from the district, I don't think this is a good idea, you know? Sometimes they can help us a lot, and we know Karen said, just said that clearly, they're only helping parents or students to stay in the hotel, and nothing else, so, we should work with them, even, we're not perfect. Some, some people, they don't wanna work with us because we have bad, goo- good and bad. So, it's the same thing, we know what they're doing, it was the servicing, we don't want everything, all the services from them, but it's very clear, they're helping us, they're giving us some money, and it's all about helping, we're gonna help kids and the family, and if it's, the focus is only there, we should say yes to that.
I think, um, part of this too, is from my understanding of how this money is dispersed, is that these organizations all apply for grants that are willing to do this work, and, and so they apply to be able to do, and they have to specify out to the public what they do with that. So it's providing monies to this organization, uh, and I don't know specifically, but I just know from my experience, um, that that's, you apply for that grant, and then you disperse that, so that you can help the families.
I guess, my question would be, San Diego Youth Services is providing, like, its toiletries, funding, what if the district provided that piece, we get the fifteen days from the county, like, they're giving out, and, and then the district, it sounds like it's a small nominal amount, if, if we need to provide funding for that, um, that piece that San Diego Youth Services is doing. Is that, has that amount been quantified? Um, supplies for families living in temporary housing, I mean, that's probably, that needs to, for, for the district to go ahead and do that, to avoid the involvement and potentially direct contact relationship between San Diego Youth Services and minor, uh, from our district.
We can, if it's approved, we can say we don't want any additional supplies given to families, I don't know what the county would say, the county Office of Education would say, um, yes, we could use our funding, our Title I funding, the reserve for homeless families, or those types of things. But, I, I'm saying, yes, it can happen, but I'm not in charge of the grant.
So, are we saying that there is a way to separate out this, from different, we don't know what this, what this entire, we could ask, okay? But, but is there a timeline on this?
Well, it's available during those times, so.
Karen, is it an up to sixty thousand, or is it a sixty thousand plan?
You would have an allotment up to sixty thousand, and it would only be for those services.
Okay, so if it wasn't, you used, it's not, you use, it is, you use, and it goes forward, just wanted to clarify that, that's one of my questions. Any other discussion on the topic?
This is, this is the vote on number fourteen, correct?
It's correct.
Um, I, I make a motion to approve the Project REST program with the County Office of Education, removing San Diego Youth Services, and, um, if this board wants to explore what it costs to provide toiletries and supplies to families, um, and to fund that, um, totally open to that, um, in, in the interest of keeping San Diego Youth Services away from the youth in our district, the minors in our district. Um, I think it's a small price to pay for, for that level of safety that we can, we can have a guarantee for those students.
Because you don't want San Diego Youth Services to buy on toilet paper?
No, because of the inappropriate direct contact relationships San Diego Youth Services has, um, established with students in this county, asking them very personal questions, offering them money to secret shop their doctors.
Alright, Anthony, I, I agree with you on that, but Karen has said in her research that that is not part of this issue. All they are doing is providing a fund for purposes of these additional costs, that they are providing no services, quote-unquote, that you and I, without fleshing a breed, should not be part of the circumstance.
So when they did their drop-in on blankets and toiletries at the motel to a kid that we referred from our district, there, there's no possibility of San Diego Youth Services staff, um, establishing a contact relationship with that student at that, at that time?
County Office of Education said there is no other services being provided other than physical items that families need.
So our contract with the County Office of Education was, this is, this is a contract between us and the County Office of Education. So with their contract, I agree, that makes perfect sense, they are not providing any other additional services. It's San Diego Youth Services that will contact the students with blankets, toiletries, and whatever else. It seems like they're gonna provide financial assistance and home supplies, uh, for families living in temporary housing through the Office of Ed. Did you, I guess the question is, is there any point where a minor would have direct contact with San Diego Youth Services as part of this program? Not part of the contract, but part of the program, once they're at that motel? If, if the answer is absolutely not, there's no, no possibility of that, um, we can find that out, then it'd probably be a yes vote to this, if, if not, if you can't find that out right now, it'd be a yes vote to the fifteen-day deal through the County Office of Education, it sounds like it's this separate and apart from San Diego Youth Services, and removing, uh, San Diego Youth Services from the provision of the home supplies for families living in temporary housing.
The question posed to them, will they be providing any other services, any other services of that nature, and the answer was?
Yeah, 'cause once they have contact, under this contract, the answer would be no, right? The county office of education's saying no, that's not our agreement, but San Diego Youth Services shows up at the door of the motel with blankets and toothbrushes and toothpaste, um, uh, what then? 'Cause I was initiated by our, our referral.
So the speculation is that San Diego Services is a physical component to link the blanket or whatnot, or toilet paper or whatnot, to this family itself, is that your, that's, that's clearly your concern, right?
Yeah, more so to us, to a minor, more so than a family, um, but yes, 'cause this doesn't exclude minors.
Mr. President, for your order, I think there's a motion on the table.
Well, he hasn't flushed it all the way out. It might be, be need modified, as we have some additional discussion. Okay, Anthony, you, you were in the middle of the motion.
I would, I would move to, uh, approve the contract with the county office of education for this day for up to fifteen days, specifically excluding San Diego Youth Services, um, from the agreement and from any potential contact with our students.
Friendly, friendly amendment, if you don't mind? Here's the president. My thought process is this, conditional approval based upon affirmation that San Diego Services is not, is not in direct contact with Cahu Valley's students. And, and that would be at school or at the motel site where they would end up, wherever, however this service is, is wintered?
It's blanket.
Okay.
Not the blanket, but it would be anything, blanket of the concept.
Got me. All right, would you accept the friendly amendment?
Yes.
Okay, so I will restate for the board, the approval will be conditional upon contact with San Diego County Office of Education, and ensuring that San Diego Youth Services is not in direct contact with the Cahu Valley minor through this process.
Yes.
Do we, with that friendly amendment, with that motion on the table, do we have a second? Second, so, uh, all in favor, verbal?
Aye.
Aye? Maze? No mazes, passes five oh, that is conditional, Karen, please find out that information. See, Anthony and I do agree. All right, now we go to, um, let's go back to eight. I actually do have some comments on eight, but again, I, the president, I still allow us, so anybody have any comments on eight, and I do appreciate, uh, additional information coming from Karen again. Through the board, anybody from the board first having comments on eight?
I, I have a comment. Surprise, surprise. Oh, okay, Real Matters, I, uh, thank you Karen for sending me the information of what they are proposing to do with, uh, the Empower students, correct? So Empower is a campus right here for most of you, probably, is that, but, um, the, what, what the actual student system as a curriculum, it's very complex, into, uh, mental health and behavioral health, um, that sort of thing, so really getting into the kids' heads on that. Now, I, what I found interesting, and I think I can review this, 'cause there's, um, the board, the board of the Friday board, I think, um, I found, 'cause we, Jim, we were both, uh, you know, looking at the Steel, their involvement with Steel Canyon High School, and I followed up with, that'll be my comments, just so you know. We're going. Gotcha. So there, it's, okay. So, Real Matters, me. Okay. Contacted S H S leadership, this is Karen, um, I don't think there's anything confidential in here, right?
No, there were questions regarding Unity Day, this contract, these services do not include Unity Day. I did before I learned that it wasn't in this scope, um, we didn't contact Steel Canyon High School around the concern, so we shared during the board meeting.
Okay. So, um, they, they confirm that there was apparent concern regarding Unity Day and student self-refers, and this, this denial is kind of interesting to me, um, but no evidence was found regarding this specific self-referral complaint related to the program activities. I, I feel like that's so narrow that there could have been more there, but, um, in reading the curriculum that, uh, is proposed to be delivered to the students here at Empower, it's kind of light on public instruction and heavy on getting in, in the kids' heads about home life, about, um, their own mental health struggles, it, it may even border on examining, surveying, questioning students about their own mental health, which triggers, in my mind, uh, the requirement under the Ed Code and the Protection of People Rights Amendment at the federal level, that you have active written consent from parents. Um, and, and this is coupled with the concern from, from the Steel Canyon parent, uh, regarding the questions that were being asked that obviously didn't strike them as, uh, ed- education-related. I think is a fair, fair statement there, um, personal questions being asked of, of a student without prior, uh, active consent from the parent. We gave the curriculum that Empower is proposing, or not Empower, sorry, Real Matters is proposing to deliver to Empower students, um, only increased that concern and, and validated it for me, um, that the, it's light on public instruction and heavy on mental health and inquiry into that realm for a student, and I didn't see in the agreement anything about obtaining active written consent from parents, um, prior to, uh, inquiring that of students. So those are my comments.
Anybody else? Okay, so with regard to the aspect of Steel Canyon, um, involvement, I had the opportunity to discuss the matter with, with a Steel Canyon student, a near, a senior honor student, near the top of class, and, um, participated in this activity, and point blank was told that it was not repelled. It's not, not taken seriously by the students, and the fact of the matter is, it just seemed to be superfluous to additional S E L con- con- content. Take that, uh, take that matter seriously. So, it's not a large expense. But Karen, if there was any more additional comment about specifically what this is going to, this being specific implementation, what is it supposed to do that our other S E L does not?
Um, the population it serves currently has high needs.
Agreed, the, the, the population it's, it goes to is different than the general population still.
The number one target is peer conflicts, the continual peer conflicts that escalate, um, on the campus, of understanding how you're feeling and being able to manage yourself before you verbally or physically interact with staff or another student, these escalations and these conflicts, that is the number one tool we are trying to increase in, in students, especially on this campus.
And has there been any, um, contact or references from the protocols that this has been, or, I mean, that this is used, been used in the past on other sites and, and what they thought of an element for?
I, I'm not familiar with this group, someone mentioned that they didn't work before and didn't, um, work at Montgomery years ago, uh, there's some staff, um, here in Ed Services that are, um, especially credential in behavior, um, assessment, that have worked with people, um, in this group, and that they, um, recommended, this is all coming from, um, Iman, who I took a deeper dive, and why are you asking for this, where is this coming from? So it's looking forward at, at deeper dive into the tools for all the students on the campus, and for those that have often are having conflicts with anyone around them, to help them work individually through what's frustrating them before they, um, take action and affect.
And final clarification, it again does not include the Unity Day concept.
Unity Day has no part of this, no.
That was, that was, that was.
But it wasn't clear, it, it was actually written in the last item, so, um, clarified everything with Iman, and that was, um, what I shared with Nick.
I appreciate that, he's not part of the Steel Canyon issue as well, so.
Karen, Karen, um, go ahead, Karen, other Karen, go ahead.
No, um, Karen, I know we had had a couple emails, like, back and forth, and you were gonna ask him on, on, like, what is some of the, the successes, or that this is a program they haven't used?
She has, no, she has not used it, she, uh, was told, told about it, and then she referred to someone in Ed Services, um, with the behavior certification that hasn't had experience with this, and so she was hopeful that they could provide additional support with students, whole group activities and individual, um, support for students, to reduce the amount of conflicts and verbal, but mostly physical.
And helping with self-regulation and, yeah. And so, um, is there any others, or what has been used in the past? Has it been something?
No, I, I believe the team just works on their own, like, all the training they have, they have a large number of D I S staff and paraprofessionals, um, working to create very predictable systems to, for coordinating for students.
Yeah, I remember having some conversations with some of the students when they were out there playing ball, and just how they were talking about how they, their own personal growth, and how they have learned to self-regulate, and they really appreciated their, their professors, their teachers and their, their staff, so.
We've had a lot of student success where they weren't successful on a comprehensive campus, they are individually, you know, success.